Welcome everyone to our October 2018 zoning hearing. I'll let everybody have a seat and as our custom, we have someone here to give the invocation. And for those who are wanting to participate, the pastor that we have this morning is Pastor Marty Godfrey of the Burnt Hickory Baptist Church, if he would come forward. Then after that, we're going to have Officer Ott who will lead the pledge of allegiance. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Let's pray. Father, we come to you and we just start with the word of thanks, giving to you and praise. We thank you that your word says that every morning your mercies are brand new. We thank you for that. We thank you for this wonderful county in which we live. We thank you for its resources, for its people. And Father, as we gather together for a meeting like this, we know that there are different people coming with different viewpoints and we are trying to steward this county as to what is best. And Father, as we do that, help us to realize that we really come to you as a source of wisdom and discernment. You tell us in your word, if any of us lack wisdom, to come to you and ask and you will give. And so Father, we look to that. I thank you for these commissioners, that they are public servants and that they try to, first of all, manage resources wisely to everyone's benefit as much as possible. Father, we know that they need wisdom and discernment and we know that you tell in your word that whether you turn to the right or to the left, your ears will hear a voice behind you saying, "This is the way, walk in it." And so Father, we pray that in this busy life, that we would still ourselves enough to be able to listen to instructions that come from you. For we know that you say that unless the Lord builds the house, it's labor in vain. And unless the Lord watches out over the city, its watchmen stand guard in vain. So Father, we are but watchmen of the people resources here. We serve not just at the constituents' pleasure, but at your pleasure, Father, and we look to you above all. We give you this time, give a sense of unity. If emotions are involved, Father, help them to be helpful and not harmful. And we pray that you will be pleased with how business is conducted this morning. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a fairly, we don't have a real long agenda today, but we have some hold cases and because John Peterson does it so much better than I am, I'm gonna let him explain the rules and regulations as we go on with the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. In each case is called, the applicant is requested to stand and signify that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call for opposition to signify that they're here also, so they may be counted for the official record. Then after the counting of the opposition, the applicant and any opposition will be asked to come forward and be sworn in, so they can present testimony to the board. The applicant will testify first and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. Each side gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a rebuttal process and there's not a process to reserve your time, so convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on an issue, you might want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes and you don't want one person taking up the entire 10-minute period or repeating something that's already been said. Then after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for questions or comments. And after that, the board will make a decision to either hold, continue, approve, or deny the matter at hand. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued and will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-26, Ostel Cosmetic Dentistry. That case was continued by the staff until the November 6, 2018 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z-26 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-37, Winchester Parkway LLC. That case was continued by the planning commission, or excuse me, by the staff until the November 6, 2018 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z-37 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-49, KO Management Incorporated. That case was continued by the staff until the November 6, 2018 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z-49 will not be heard today. And finally, rezoning case Z-56, Wright Oakdale LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the November 6, 2018 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z-56 will not be heard today. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cellphone, please turn the volume off on your cellphones. The ringing does interfere with broadcasting presentations. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within two years, immediately preceding the filing of a rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this is located on the table at the back of the room. Additionally, I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to the hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. Miss Chairman or Madam Chair and Board, there is one case on today's agenda which the opposition is asking for an early head count. I get to show people here who are opposed to rezoning case Z-58, Bobby Eltero, please Let the record show there's 12 people opposed. Is there anyone here in support of rezoning case Z-58? Please raise your hands. The record shows there's no one here in support. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, we're ready to start the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, John.
Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for October 2, 2018. Res zoning case Z-66, Schaefer Road Church of Christ, request rezoning from R-20, PSC and CSF to O&amp;I for the purpose of a church with expansion of parking lot and landlot 85 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Schaefer Road between Ostel Road and Favor Road. Staff recommends deletion to the R-20 zoning district, subject to the following conditions: Site plan received by the zoning division on August 2, 2018, variance in the zoning comments section, site plan review section comments and recommendations, ordering and steward division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations, and allowance of a religious facility on less than five acres. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-66? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda, LUP 11, James E. McGuire, request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of poultry in landlots 1191 and 1258 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Lake Shore Drive, west of Blackland Drive. Staff recommends approval, subject to a maximum of four hens, no roosters, to continue to allow accessory building on the property without a primary structure. Chicken coop to be no less than 100 feet from the rear property line and 100 feet from the front curb if the coop stays out of the floodplain. Front setback can be reduced if floodplain is affected, and stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 11? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you, John. It's back to the board. Do you have any comments?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'd like to ask if there's any opposition to two of my cases, which may be candidates for the consent agenda as well. The first one is Z-60.
Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-60, Lloyd Development Services? There's no one here opposed to that one.
Okay, then, and the second one is OSC 01, 2018.
Is there anyone here opposed to OSC 01, Province Homes LLC? There's a couple of people opposed.
Okay, we'll hold that. In that case, the applicant, the attorney for the applicant has done a great job, I think, working with the people in the surrounding neighborhood, but some people may not have heard what some of those concerns are, so we'll hear that. So I'd like to make a motion that we put Z-60 on the consent agenda.
I think he has to read it into the record.
Yes, I know.
Okay. Res zoning case Z-60, Lloyd Development Services, request rezoning from R-20 to R-5 for the purpose of a single-family subdivision in landlot 81 of the 20th District. The property is located on the east side of Kembridge Road, south of Lake Appleth Drive. Is there anyone opposed to this case? The record shows no one opposed, and the applicant's representative is present. They need a vote to add it.
We need to make a motion to add to the consent agenda.
That's right.
All right, we need a motion to add that to the consent agenda.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion that we add Z-60 to the consent agenda. Would you like me to read in the stipulations?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Recommend that we put it on the consent agenda, subject to the letter stipulations revised by site plan and architectural renderings received by the zoning division on August 31, 2018, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications, and all staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Do we have a second? We have a second, by God. All those in favor? That has been added to our consent agenda. Consent agenda has been read and now we need a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, we accept the consent agenda with the addition of Z-60, so it would be Z-66, LUP 11, and Z-60.
Do we have a second? We have a second, by God. All those in favor? The consent agenda is approved.
Okay, all those focused on consent agenda, you're free to leave. Just come back in two weeks for the Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. And moving into the continuing cases. Res zoning case Z-53, Elvia Benitez, request a rezoning from LRO to R-20 for the purpose of a single-family house in landlot 59 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Michael Drive, east of Brackett Street. Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-53? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good morning. Could you just give us your name?
My name is Agusten Benitez.
And?
My name is Agusten Benitez.
Okay, thank you. If you'll just state for us what you're wanting while you're applying for rezoning?
Yeah.
Okay. Could you tell us what you want to do with the property?
Because my interpreter is not coming today. He's coming today.
Oh, okay, so you have an interpreter?
Yeah.
And he hasn't come, or is he not coming?
And so, of course, she's coming, she lives in beautiful highway, maybe a traffic.
I think we need probably, John, to just, yeah, and then when the interpreter gets here, because clearly it wouldn't be fair to proceed.
Okay.
So, sir, if, what we're going to do is, if you'll just have a seat and we'll wait on your interpreter to come, and then we'll call you at the end of the agenda.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you.
You will, you will come with the interpreter.
Okay, so we're going to hold that one until later on in the hearing and move on to rezoning case, let's see. Res zoning case Z-57, John Gaskin, request rezoning from CS to CS for the purpose of modifying the current zoning stipulations in landlots 84, 137, 138, 139, and 159 of the 19th District. The property is located on the east side of Lost Mountain Road, south of Dallas Highway, across from Corner Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-57? The record shows no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward, be sworn in?
Definitely. Well, that's very interesting. How do you take this?
Good morning, my name is John Gaskin, I am the applicant. I'm also Vice President of Patrick Malloy Communities, who is the developer and the builder in Kyle Farm Subdivision, which is the subject of this rezoning application today. We are requesting a modification of some early letter, stipulation letter from 2006 on our very last phase of development in Kyle Farm, which is the northwest section of the property. What I'd like to do is just briefly describe our company, what our concept is, for the reason behind this request, and then speak specifically about our request, some of the details, and then address a couple of the issues from the zoning analysis that relate to this property. Patrick Malloy Communities is a high-end residential builder all over Atlanta, but we are, in addition to multi, or rather, family-type housing, we're one of the three top builders in Atlanta by volume of senior housing. And we are in very large communities, we have one in Canton right now, which is a combination of family housing and senior housing. That's a 1,400-lot community. Approximately 900 of the homes are age-restricted in that particular community, senior housing, and the other half is multifamily, or excuse me, family-type housing. So what we are looking for in Atlanta is to introduce a multi-generational concept to our communities. And what I mean by that is so that grandmothers, grandfathers, kids, moms and dads all can live within the same community, because what's happening in the market is we're finding that senior housing is being isolated and being developed separate from family housing, which is not the way things have been done historically. And some people want that type of community, but some people want to live in a community where their grandkids live. So we've had really good success. Our community in Canton is always been one of the top-three selling communities in Atlanta. And again, it offers age-restricted and it offers family housing. So that, the intent in Kyle Farm is we have a slightly oversized amenity, so the parents and grandparents and everybody can meet at the amenity, they can, the grandkids can walk to the grandparents' house, and they're all within the same community and it's not, we have to drive across town or we're not separating housing. So we are trying to respond to the market and I think we're kind of the leading edge when it comes to that, and so far we've had great success. And quite honestly, the reason, the idea of creating or introducing the senior housing to this family community actually originated from one of the homeowners who bought a lot from us in the family section, and then their suggestion was, why can't we, my parents move here and live in the same community? So that started the application process on our behalf. And so that's where we're coming from. That's the overall context of what we'd like to do in the community. So in order to accomplish that, we had to take the product, or what we wanted to do is take the product in Canton, which is $300,000 to $500,000 product for senior housing, and introduce it to this very last phase in Kyle Farm. Currently, the last phase is zoned, there are 56 lots that are zoned 75 feet wide. We want to keep the same streets, but just convert the lots to 60-foot lots, which is what that senior housing is built on. So we would go from a current request of 56 75-foot lots, or a current zoning, rather, to a request of 70 lots that are 60 feet wide. So that's a net increase of 14 lots in that section. No other part of the community to be affected, none of the conditions or zoning or letter stipulation that affect the other part of the, what I call the family side of the community would change, and we're not asking to modify any of those conditions. If the application is successful, the overall lot count on this 142-acre site would increase from 208, as are currently approved, to 222. Our gross density would increase from 1.5 to 1.57 units per acre, so it's a minor increase in the density. We've also requested that the minimum heated square footage for the community be reduced from 2,200 square feet to 1,600 square feet, although half of our age-restricted or senior product actually would fit the 2,200 square foot, and over, we have two product lines that are slightly below the 2,200 square feet. And also because of the same concept of the smaller lots, we've asked that the building separation, which is one of the conditions in the letter stipulation, be reduced from 15 feet to 10 feet between structures. As far as specific zoning issues, the adjacent land uses, and you can see from the map on the, on the screen, the only area we're looking to do a modification is where the lots are numbered, which is the upper-left-hand corner of the plan. None of the other project will be affected. To the north of that parcel is commercial office, to the east is Lost Mountain Park, and to the west is Lost Mountain Road. So we do not abut any other single-family lots, other than the lots that are within our community in Kyle Farm. Our density request of one, increase from 1.5 to 1.57 units per acre remains in compliance with the future land use map, which calls for very low density, two units or per acre or less, so we're still below that. All our lots in this active adult area or senior housing will be totally maintained by the homeowners' association. The open space within the community, which was mandated by the original stipulation letter, will remain unchanged. The home prices, as I mentioned, and I've guaranteed this in writing to our existing neighbor, our existing homeowners, will start in the high threes, and this product sells in the high threes to the 500s in Canton, so that is consistent with the family home prices within the community. We have the same architectural style on the exteriors, same building materials and so forth as the family housing, so we remain in compliance or consistent with the remaining One of the write-ups in the planning staff noted, from the Cobb County Board of Education, was that Hillgrove High School was overcapacity, as is Loving Good School. So by taking family housing and substituting it with senior-type housing, we think that would help address that issue of overcrowding at those two particular schools. And one other issue that was raised by staff was the 2006 letter of stipulation that essentially zoned this property. In that letter, there were 47 conditions. We're asking only to modify five of them, and actually, two of them address essentially the same issue. One is gross density and the other's net density. So for all intents and purposes, we're really only requesting a modification of four of those conditions that would allow us to develop this project in this sort of way. So we're not asking to overturn a letter of stipulation that settled this zoning back in 2006. We are, we do realize that that was 12 years ago, so there are some market conditions that we're trying to address, and again, it's not like we're completely trying to overturn. I do have nine signatures of current homeowners within Kyle Farm, and there are 15 homeowners. We did have a public meeting at the clubhouse a couple of weeks ago, and I think we had, with the exception of one homeowner, everyone was there. We have presentation, and over the last week, I've collected nine letters of support, or nine signatures. And Madam Chairman, if it's appropriate, I would like to enter these into the minutes. If not, they are available, if anybody would like to check them. Okay, thank you. Unless there are any questions or follow-up, that's my presentation.
Was there any opposition to this application? Seeing and hearing no opposition, it would be back to the skip for his comments.
Okay, so this is my case. First off, I'm surprised that there is no opposition here today. I have gotten, I don't know the count, but in the vicinity of a dozen, maybe perhaps more than that, letters of opposition from people in the subdivision, as well as people surrounding the subdivision. And I'm surprised that nobody was here today. Having said that, I'd like to address a couple of the issues. Mr. Gaskin, you've said that one of the benefits of having, basically, you don't need to come up, that's okay, one of the benefits of having, basically, retired senior living overlay, if you will, in this northwest corner of the subdivision, that there's a benefit to the schools. And we've been around and around on that. There's a benefit to an overcrowded school because no, you know, a relatively small number of additional students would be offered to that school, generally speaking, because of the nature of the, you know, the age restriction of those new residents. But on the other hand, there's a lower property tax revenue as well that goes into the schools. And so, we've heard both sides of that. Part of your argument, the key part of your argument, is that you want to have a complete community. And I think, I think my mind says, well, what is a community? Because right across the street, Winsong has a retired senior living development right over there. That's immediately across, immediately adjacent with the Lost Mountain Road, separating it, and that's it. So is that part of the community or not? I tend to think it probably is. The bottom line is, you know, staff is recommending denial for a good reason. The current proposal seeks to change the decision of the Board of Commissioners back in 2005 by changing, as you said, either four or five, depending on how you want to count, stipulations out of the sum total of whatever it is, 42, in that letter of agreeable terms that were reached back then. I feel reluctant, strongly reluctant, to want to do anything to change an agreement that the Board of Commissioners reached in a negotiation, even though it was 12 years ago. I think that's up to them. More, more to the point, there's, you're asking for some variances, and there's this, the proof, the burden of proof is on the applicant to show what the hardship is for variances. And I can't understand, I don't understand what the hardship is. And so, for those two reasons, the fact that this was a negotiated settlement back in 2005, it sounds like, and there's a lack of proof on hardships, I'm going to make a motion that we recommend denial and let the BOC deal with changing their agreement if they choose to, when it comes to them in two weeks. So that's my motion.
A motion, we have a second, by God, by Andy. Oh, Andy got it. So I have a motion and a second to reject, call the question. And that is a proof of rejection, four to zero.
Okay, rezoning case Z-58, Bobby Eltero, request rezoning from R-20 to NRC for the purpose of retail, and landlot 364 of the 16th District. The property is located on the northeast corner of Chastain Road and the I-575 ramp. The applicant's representative is present. Earlier, there are 12 people here opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in.
my name is Garvis Sams. I'm with the law firm Sams, Larkin Huff and Bally, and represent both the applicant and the property owner concerning this application for rezoning. So at the appropriate time, I can respond to any questions you have, and feel free to do so either during or after my presentation. If you need to interrupt to ask a question, that's certainly fine with me. The property at issue is situated, as you all know, on the north side of Chastain Road with direct contiguity to the northbound on-ramp to I-575. And it's currently zoned R20, has been for, I think since 1972, general rezoning of Cobb County. And it's under the future land use map, however, in an area that is denominated as a neighborhood activity center, which of course is not compatible with the R20 classification. And quite candidly, as I'll point out in a minute, the site's certainly not suitable for single-family residential development. We have, as late as the 26th of September, provided you with a completely revised stipulation letter, a completely revised site plan, changes the demeanor and also the positioning of this application in response to some issues that have been articulated during the process, more specifically from you as Planning Commission and also from members of the community. The staff, or your professional staff, has recommended approval, and that was when we were asking for the neighborhood retail commercial classification. And of course, I think I can speak for Mr. Peterson and staff now. They certainly have no problem with a downzoning from NRC to the LRC or a deletion. And this will be specifically for purposes of limited commercial, retail and for offices. And if you look at the narrowly defined permitted uses under LRC, you can see that there are some fairly onerous strictures and a fairly limited number of permitted uses under LRC, and purposely so. Typically, you find LRCs on the outskirts or the flanking perimeters of neighborhood activity centers, much like this one is situated. This property is also situated, as you can see with the aerial photograph that's being shown right now, directly across Chastain Road. And Chastain is a median divided road, so these are right-in, right-out turning movements regardless of the use of this property. But right across Chastain Road from a piece that's zone GC, part of that was recently entitled for a climate-controlled self-service storage facility. Presently, what you're seeing on this photograph is the old abandoned BP station, but that site, that building will be demolished and the site will be developed for a three-story climate-controlled self-service storage facility. If you look to our east, you see the Resurgence Medical Complex. It's oriented in a fashion so that the parking of that is direct, has direct contiguity to six lots within the southernmost portion of Chastain Lake subdivision. And also directly across Chastain Road, there was a recently filed application for an approximate 60-acre site, which is a development of regional impact with massive amounts of commercial, office, apartments, active adult or age-targeted apartments, and other components you'd find in a mixed-use development. But since it's a DRI, that's probably something you're going to hear next year, probably will be something you'll hear next year because it has to go through ARC and the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. And if you look to our north, there are two subdivision lots. These are zoned RA4. They're within Chastain Lake's subdivision, and they're the two lots that we have direct contiguity to. If you look at the, if you can tell on the, if you can tell on the aerial photo that's being shown, those residential lots are rather deep, which is good for the property owners with whom we've kept in the loop in terms of our changes in site plan, our changes in stipulations. But these are the two lots that we're talking about here. The houses are nestled closer to the cul-de-sac. So, and this is our property right here. The Resurgence Orthopedic Center I was talking about is comprised of these buildings and then the parking area here, which has contiguity, I think I said, to six lots. One, two, three, four, five, five lots. My apologies for that. And similarly, those lots are kind of moved up to the Lakeside Point cul-de-sac, but not as much distancing as there is between our property and these two residential tracks. Our original plan showed a 20-foot buffer, which is what is required under NRC along this property line here. We've now increased that to a 25-foot landscape buffer and also set up a landscape oversight committee consisting of the community development director, these two property owners here, my client, and of course, with Commissioner Burrow, the district commissioner making final determinations. To further orient you, this is the climate-controlled self-service storage facility. This is the 60-acre track here into the south. This is the on-ramp to I-575 in a northbound fashion. There's not going to be any more improvements to this. All the managed lanes are in. This is where it is. And again, referring to the median divided nature of Chastain Road, you can see that neither we nor Resurgence Orthopedic Park have full turning movements. They're restricted to right-in, right-out turning movements off of Chastain Road. The buffer we're providing, of course, as I said, it exceeds ordinance requirements. It's there with those subdivisions on that cul-de-sac lot. While this has been pending, we've established a dialogue with those two residences. As I said, we've papered it, penciled it out, and made sure that they are in the loop. They are members of the landscape oversight committee if they choose to be so. What my client's done here is listen to the community. Staff gave us, I won't say a carte blanche, but staff encouraged us to be developed as NRC. They recommended such. But we felt like we needed to make adjustments based upon what we were hearing and based upon conversations we've had with you, more specifically you, Madam Chairman, in terms of your communications with the BFCA as well. This is a 1.37-acre tract of land, and it's kind of tucked in there with the two residences to the north, the resurgence to the east, the on-ramp to the west, and then what's going to be some, what possibly could be some very intense development across Chastain Road. So limiting this to limited retail commercial is, we think, important. Another issue that was out there is the height of the building. There's a maximum height under LRC of 35 feet. That's the same as the maximum height allowed under an R20, which is what we're zoned. There's a very convoluted definition of height and how it's determined. But I'll let you defer to John on that. I just know it can be 35 feet, and that's the tops that it can be. Prior to construction, we'll form this landscape oversight committee, as I mentioned, entrance signage, ground-based monument style. We have relocated, there was a dumpster or is a dumpster on the site originally. The dumpster was situated in this fashion here. We can see we've moved that there. This depicts that 25-foot increased landscape buffer for zoning. This once two-story building has become one story, and we've adjusted parking accordingly. We have impervious surface on the side of 61.7%, which, as you know, is below the 70-cent max allowed under LRC. As far as otherwise permitted uses, we're agreeing not to do. There's a veritable plethora of those. I won't read through all of them, but for instance, produce stands, designated recycling facilities, group homes, non-automotive repair, parking lots, radio, television, communications towers, which would also require a slump, rest homes. We've agreed to no restaurants. Restaurants aren't allowable use under LRC, but it was such a bell ringer of an issue to many folks, and rightly so. We understand the complexion of the northern side of Chastain Road going from Bell's Ferry westerly to this site. So we prohibited any type of restaurants, eating or drinking establishments, including any drive-throughs or fast casual. No tattoo parlors, billiards, pawn shops, motorcycle sales, vapor smoke shops, which, first time I heard vape shops, I thought someone, it was Kevin, I thought he was saying bait shops. But in any event, vape shops. Upon the redevelopment of this, we'll set up that LOC. The LOC will also cover any fencing issues that may come up. All HVAC systems will be screened from view. We will coordinate with the Department of the Georgia Department of Transportation, although the managed lanes aspect are through. We have a certain distance we have to remain from I-575. And I mentioned right-in, right-out turning minutes. I've got six seconds. And I think that covers it, Madam Chairman. We do have it set up so that the district commissioner can make minor modifications. So we think, with this being an NAC, with us having staff's recommendation for approval, this consistent with the future land use map, and because we've listened and we've done what the community has asked us to do, and this is not a site suitable, obviously, for residential, we do ask that you, as a Planning Commission, recommend the board this be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from the opposition at this time.
Good morning, Planning Commission. I'm Erin Mulgrew, speaking on behalf of the Bell's Ferry Civic Association. We object to the proposed retail rezoning of a residential, undeveloped wooded 1.37-acre lot on the northeast corner of Chastain Road at the I-575 on-ramp. This small parcel is surrounded by the I-575 northbound ramp, Chastain Road, a medical building, and a residential neighborhood. A strip mall is not an appropriate use on this lot. In fact, there's no retail on Chastain Road east of I-575 up until Canton Road. This corridor is filled primarily with subdivisions on both sides, a couple of low-volume businesses such as the medical building, Resurgence Park, certainly no retail with high volume, long hours, and weekend operations. The planned storage building across the street has only five parking spaces, indicating extremely low volume traffic. A busy retail building with its associated long hours, customer truck noise, light pollution, fumes from truck deliveries, and a 35-feet height abutting a subdivision is too drastic a step up for this rezoning request. Additionally, there is available retail space nearby. At 9,000 square feet, it exceeds the size allowable for LRC given the acreage. Shoehorning a building in this awkward strip of land would mean the right-only egress onto Chastain Road would be particularly hazardous, customers having to cross several lanes of traffic, including the right-turning lane onto I-575. In addition, residents now complain of the difficulty of leaving Chastain Lakes during commute time, the prevalence of cars making U-turns in front of the subdivision, and the regular backing up of traffic past Resurgence Park trying to access I-575. This photo shows the two westbound Chastain Road lanes at Resurgence Park, taken at 4:45 p.m. during the work week. The traffic is already backed up past the entrance. Now imagine trying to exit on the lot behind where the photo was taken. Businesses located along a divided road with a median such as Chastain have a higher rate of failure due to inaccessibility as evidenced by the long abandoned gas station across the street. Despite what the recent stipulation letter professes, we have had no meetings with the applicant about this rezoning. In fact, we have reached out numerous times to speak to, with Mr. Terrell, ourselves to request a meeting, but he has refused. Again, we have never met with the applicant. The BFCA would prefer this property to remain R20 since the future land use map is a guideline. Retail businesses here seem doomed to fail. Long-term, we don't think an abandoned building here will do anybody any good. We ask that you consider the real-life implications of granting this rezoning in this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Planning Commission. My name is Lisa Hatcher. I live in Chastain Lakes, and my home backs up to the property in question. I'm here today on behalf of my family and the family of my neighbors, Joe Pernici, I can't say his name still, Joe P., who is in the audience today. We are the two most impacted residents, and we are vehemently opposed to the rezoning of the residential property behind our homes. We were both assured the property behind us was zoned residential when we purchased our homes, or we never would have bought them. This is the second house my family has owned in Chastain Lakes. We lived in the first one for 19 years. When we moved to this side of the neighborhood five years ago, we felt confident that its proximity to the entrance to I-575, for its residential zoning, would prevent any commercial building from disrupting our privacy. I am extremely concerned with the crime associated with having 9,000 square feet of retail with parking lot behind my house with just 25-foot buffer. How many strangers will that bring to my property? Here is a photo of my backyard. The fence is my property line. My husband is a bird watcher. That hobby will end if this is built. Birds won't come, but trucks making deliveries will. I won't be able to sit on my porch or enjoy my backyard due to the pollution, the night lighting, the noise and commotion encroaching on my property. My neighbor Joe has grandchildren and is concerned that he won't be able to let them roam free in his backyard anymore, and fears for their safety. Here's a picture of Joe's backyard. The hedge behind the playground equipment is the property line. There are now flagged property markers visible. Rezoning this retail would be awful for us personally, and it will negatively impact the entire neighborhood with increased crime and lower property values. It is already almost impossible to get out of our entrance on Chastain Road because of all the people making U-turns in front of the subdivision in order to get to Resurgence Park, the medical building off of Chastain. I can't imagine the traffic nightmare if the proposed strip mall were to be built. It just doesn't make sense. I've lived in Cobb County for most of my life. I grew up in this area, and although it's grown very quickly, I still love it here. There's empty retail property that would much better, be much better suited for a strip mall, and I'm asking that you do not allow the rezoning to be approved.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. I am Michael LaBelle. My wife and I are 32-year residents of Chastain Lakes. We presently reside at 142 North Lakeside Drive. I am currently a member of the Board of Directors for the Chastain Lakes Homeowners Association, and I'm here today to voice our opposition to Z58. We do not believe this type of retail commercial development belongs adjacent to our well-established residential neighborhood with its quiet 221 single-family detached homes. Our residents bought their homes hoping this small parcel of land would remain zoned residential. We do not believe any type of retail should be developed in this location, especially a strip mall, although it will no longer contain any resident restaurant, excuse me, component or eating, drinking establishment. It could still include such things as bakery, delicatessen, butcher shop, or grocery store, all of which we find completely unacceptable due to possible smell or rodent issues due to waste or dumpster issues. With the loss of its many trees and only a 25-foot buffer, the noise level will be unacceptable for those residents living near it. We are already dealing with inadequate sound barriers that have been installed along Interstate 575. Furthermore, the fact that this property sits higher than our subdivision and will contain 35-foot structures, it will tower over the existing homes. In addition, we have very serious concerns regarding the stormwater discharge from this property through our subdivision and into our lakes. Even stormwater management has concerns and have pointed this out, that best management practices for erosion and sediment control will be required as well as stake a lake study to document pre and post development levels. Our lakes are already being used as detention ponds for area subdivision and businesses, yet our subdivision is solely responsible for maintaining the water quality and the condition of its lakes, dams, and streams. The cost to do so is becoming astronomical. The Georgia Safe Dams Department has required us to hire an independent engineering firm to conduct tests, inspection reports, emergency action plans, as well as other requirements they deem necessary to properly maintain our lake stream. they deem necessary to properly maintain our lake streams and dams. Adding more development around us will make this situation worse. Other issues include the increased traffic into or in front of our main entrance, as there is no access to this property for eastbound Chastain Road traffic, requiring cars and trucks to either make a U-turn or turn around utilizing our subdivision. In summary, we vehemently oppose-- are opposed to Z-58 because we do not believe this type of commercial retail development belongs adjacent to our neighborhood with its long operating hours causing increased traffic and noise levels, problems with the runoff into our lakes, as well as other unforeseen problems. All of these contributing to adverse effects on our property values and quality of life. With that, Chastain Lakes respectfully ask that you do not recommend the approval of Z-58. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? We have about zero seconds. Thank you. It's back to the board, and this is my case that I've been handling, so I'll start by making just a few general comments. This is an extremely-- when you look at it, you think, oh, this is an easy zoning, and it's not an easy zoning. One of the things that we had to take in consideration was the fact that we had a traffic issue of this could be a ride-in, ride-out-only piece of property. Our other consideration was that it is in a neighborhood activity center. Staff approved it, a recommended approval for the NRC. And then when I met with the applicant, I said, well, a two-story would not be appropriate in this area because of the concerns with the traffic issues. So they went back and made it into a one-story. Then we had a concern with the restaurant use, and they took the restaurant use out. And then we went back, and they agreed to delimit it to the limited retail commercial, which is where we're at today with the letter stipulations defining what could go in there. I had talked to DOT, and I'm going to ask Amy if she would come up here for Cobb DOT. Asked them about-- we know it's a ride-in, ride-out, can't change from that, but I did ask Amy if they would check into about the U-turns that's down closer to Chastain Lakes to see if they'd been in accidents. And if you addressed that, Amy, I appreciate it.
Amy Diaz, DOT. We had traffic operations check into that. They did not have any accident history of concern at that location where the U-turns would be made. They also went out into the field and made sure that in a pickup truck, they could comfortably make that U-turn, and so that it is currently allowed a U-turn at that location.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Amy. And then I'd like to call Dave Braden up about concerns with the stormwater management.
Dave Braden with Stormwater Management Division.
Dave, we heard that you had concerns about the runoff and that-- so could you tell us what your concerns are and how they best can be handled?
Well, stormwater concerns are whenever you're going to develop any property, whether it's residential or commercial, we're going to increase the runoff. But when you go from a residential zoning to a commercial zoning, that impervious coverage is increased quite a bit from the maximum here from 35%. I think they're proposing 60%. So it's about double. So their stormwater management would have to be increased over and above what we would typically require, which is what my comments reflect. This area does drain to the lake and through the resurgence development, so they would need to work with resurgence to get that conveyance accounted for.
Would they be required to do a lake study?
They would. There's a lot of culverts and inlets between there and the lake that would tend to catch that sediment, but being at close proximity to Chastain Lakes, we would want to pre-impose sediment survey. And that's really to protect both. It's protected the developer to know, you know, if they don't have a blowout and there's sediment downstream, they know it's not from them. But yeah, we require both of those.
This would be a normal procedure to do in plan review.
It's required by code, yes.
And the code. But you're confident that you can control it on this track of land?
And in this case, there's not going to be a lot of grading, because it's already pretty much graded as it is. But we just want to make sure.
Okay. Thank you. And reducing it from the two-story obviously helped a little bit because it reduced the amount of impervious surface.
I think they have reduced some.
Yeah, they've reduced it to below 70%, which I think is the maximum. So, all right. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions today? Thank you. And then one of the other issues that was brought up was, and I'm going to refer to John on this one, John, about the square footage that's allowable under the-- reducing it to the LRC. Could you address that, please? Their building is 9,000, and I think they're only allowed 6,000 and some.
Yeah, for LRC, there's a maximum of 5,000 square feet per acre per building. So with this lot size, you would have a maximum of 6,850 square feet of building, max, unless the board gave them a variance to exceed that.
Okay. And I don't believe-- unless I read something, I don't believe they asked for a variance on that. Yeah, and we deleted it to it. So, thank you, John. I'm going to have Garvis Sims, if you'll come up. We had the question come up about the square footage of the building, and we did originally ask for-- y'all asked for NRC, and we've deleted it to LRC. And there's a maximum in the square footage allowable under the limited retail commercial. Did you address that in the letter, or were you aware of it?
Well, I was aware. We didn't address in the letter, but we're not seeking a variance unless you recommend approval at the square footage we propose at nine. We're fine with the 6,850 square feet, the calculation that Mr. Peterson came up with.
6,850 square feet, so you're fine with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
I don't do this much. Would that include a corresponding reduction in the parking?
We have to comply with the parking ratio requirements. We do right now. So we don't really need to reduce the parking unless it's for stormwater management purposes, and David would like to see that. We can keep it parked as is, or we can reduce it commensurately with a reduction in square footage. It's up to direction we see from staff, really.
Okay.
I guess what is it you wanted to say?
Well, I was just, you know, I know that the community would appear to me to be interested in more control of the stormwater. So if you're going to take nearly a third of the building away, you could take away about a third of the parking, and that might alleviate some of the concerns that the community has.
We're under the impervious surface, and we've got detention channeled in the same fashion as resurgence, following the county's regulations. So then that's an added benefit if, in fact, you choose to stick with the square footage that Mr. Peterson has articulated.
All right. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Garvis.
Yes, ma'am.
So now we're back to this board. We've talked to the staff, and I think I've discussed with y'all, and we all know that if you go up and down, there's a lot of vacancies in the LRO. There's no demand for office in this particular area. The retail component, given the location, we're never going to see a residential built on this lot. And one of the problems we had when the RA was built was the fact that it did back up to what we always knew would be a potential commercial lot. And then you have resurgence next door, which is O and I, but it's still commercial, it's not residential. So given all those facts, then I am ready, unless there's some more discussion, I'm ready to make a motion. All right. Please, go ahead.
So this is, I don't know if this is a legal question or not, but the community brought up the question of the cost of maintaining the lake and the additional cost that they could incur based on more, now another commercial property instead of a residential property drain. How is that? Is there a way to share that, or is anything attributable to the commercial? How does that work?
It's their private lake, as I understand it from John. And of course, stormwater is going to require the retention to retain whatever is coming off of this property when it's developed. So there's not--
So there shouldn't be impact to the lake?
There should not be an impact to the lake.
Commissioner, in the stipulation letter, it was suggested by Stormwater Management, we have agreed to pre-impose lake studies. And as Madam Chairman said, that really helps them, but importantly, it helps us from a legal perspective as well, too.
Right. I think their concern goes beyond that, right? Goes to the ongoing maintenance of the lake.
We can't increase the flow from the property.
Okay.
It'd be reduced, if anything, by reducing it. We're going to reduce the square footage even more of the building. But with the pre-lake study, that protects both parties, really, your client and the opposition.
I just want to make a couple of general comments.
Please.
Now, this parcel, the neighbors have already said, hey, if you even put a building here, it may increase noise, which to me says they understand this is not a residential parcel. You know, you could probably put three houses on this, but who's going to want to live in it? Nobody's going to want to live there. And what we have to do is the owner has a right to reasonable economic use of their property, and R-20 is not a reasonable economic use of the property. Yes, I want to make sure people understand that, because we can't tell people, essentially, if we say leave an R-20, we're saying you can't develop it for the most part, because there's not a practical way to develop, economical way, feasible way to develop it at R-20. And I'll also say rarely do we ever get an applicant that wants to agree to LRC, because it's such a restrictive commercial zoning. It's the, just about the least intensive. LROs kind of neck and neck with it, but it's a very, very restrictive zoning that really keeps intensity of use down. So I want to make sure people understand that. Also want to make sure they understand the 25-foot buffer is much larger than required by code. I think code only requires 10 foot. So 20, 25 foot gives you a double-row planning instead of a single row. So it's considerably more as far as a noise barrier and that. So I want to make sure you understand everybody's taking into account all those concerns you have, but we also have to follow kind of the guiding principles of Georgia law on this, and the person has a right to develop their property. We don't have a right to say you can't develop your property.
Thank you.
Just, I have one comment, and that has to do with the 25-foot buffer that Gault you just mentioned. If the size of the building is going to be reduced, what you've agreed to, Garvis, and that has an implication with respect to maybe reduced parking, that suggests maybe that that buffer could be increased as a gesture of goodwill towards those two residents immediately to the north. And so I'm not prepared to say that it needs to be as part of the stipulation, but I think that would be a strong gesture of goodwill for you to do that, and that might help alleviate a little bit of their concern with something going into this property immediately behind them. So that's just a thought.
May I respond just to tell you our thought process? And we did exceed what resurgence has, and we have exceeded the specific district requirements. We went one step further to set up this landscape oversight committee that has these two homeowners in it. So, and I don't know when we reduce the square footage, if it's going to be linearly, horizontally, or I don't know which way it's going to be, north, south, or east-west. And there are service, there's parking in the back of it and some service, but we'll certainly look at that issue. We've got to revise the site plan accordingly, anyway. But I just wanted you to know that we think we've exhibited some good faith and will continue to do so, and want them to have a participatory part in the plan review process.
Yeah, and I understand that, and I appreciate that, and thank you.
Thank you, Garvis. Any other questions, Garvis? Thank you. I think the applicant has been over backwards. Gault, you expressed it as, we don't normally see somebody that's willing to do the things that we ask them to do. Whenever a situation that I could think of, they were agreeable to it. We're down to a one-story building, not to exceed a one-story building. We're now down to the square footage has been reduced, which then the buffer in the back, I'm not so concerned. The 25-foot landscape buffer along with their setback is a good buffer in the back, but I think we could eliminate some of the parking in the back there, because we're going to reduce the square footage of the building, and I think that would help them even more with not having any traffic back there. We've moved the garbage, enclosed garbage over to the side where they won't have the pickup in the back. I think, I tried to think of everything that would make it better for the two property owners back there. So you can have a seat.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So with that, if there's no other comments, I'm ready to make a motion. And I would like to make a motion that we approve this for the LRC, maximum of one-story building, the square footage to be reduced to the 6,850 square feet, which is in line with the LRC, Limited Retail Commercial. The stipulation letter dated September 26, 2018, which is revised, and there's also a revised site plan in there. The comments of the staff, all comments of the staff, the recommendation of the staff were not in conflict with the letter of stipulation, and that the applicant be required to reduce the square footage of the building and then reduce to work with the homeowners of reducing the parking in the back of the building. And that would be my stipulate, my recommendation. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? And that's approved, four to zero. Thank you.
And Chairman Williams, the interpreter has come in now with the case that I mentioned earlier, so I'm going to recall that case.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I may have a point of personal preference. It has nothing to do with this case or any other cases, but in recognition of John Moore, who is putting up a good fight, and he's not here today, and we all miss him, but I just, I hope he's watching. I know he's watching his son who's coming up next, but I just wanted to give him a shout out.
Oh, thank you. I think we all do.
I know, I know. I think I'm saying something we've all felt and haven't articulated, but if he's watching, I know we all here love him, so.
And for us here, that know Carolyn Cook, her dad passed away last night, and Carolyn has been John's secretary for 40--
Assistant.
Assistant. Yeah, not secretary.
Don't make that mistake in my office.
For close to 40 years, I guess. It's been a long time. So I think our prayers, but yes, our prayers are with John, and we say hi to John. So, thank you, Garvis, for reminding us.
Okay. Resonating case Z-53, Elvia Benitez requests rezoning from LRO to R-20 for the purpose of a single-family house in Landline 59 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Michael Drive, east of Brackett Street. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-53? The record shows none opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
If you give us your name, the interpreter.
I'm sorry?
You can interpret if you give us your name.
Nagelia Benitez.
All right. Thank you.
And she's my daughter.
She's your daughter. All right. Then you're going to speak for your father, then?
Yes.
Okay. If you'd just give us a brief description of what you're wanting to do with the property.
Basically, they bought the property, but it was under a commercial residence, and they just want to change it down to residential.
Okay. Are they planning on living in the house?
No, they're planning to rent it out to somebody else.
As a rental house?
Yes, that's what they want to do with it.
Okay. How long have they owned the property?
He doesn't exactly remember, but he thinks it's like three, about three, four years.
Three, four years. Okay. And what was the property used for before?
Before, it was a daycare.
Daycare. And so now y'all want to buy, y'all want to buy and just make it into a single family and use it as a rental house?
Oh, he already bought it.
He's already bought it.
He just wants to change it from commercial down to residential.
Okay. All right. I'm going to let Gault, I'm going to let you know more about the property. I'm going to let you ask him some questions.
Okay. Do we want to see? I don't think there's any opposition.
Is there any opposition to this application? Is there any opposition to this application? Not seeing or hearing anyone, it's back to this board? And I think if you, you'd be more familiar with having them to explain.
Sure, sure. Yeah, this is a unique property because it's really was a house, but it had been used for decades as a daycare. And they came in last year to get it actually, because they lost a grandfather in using it as a daycare. They came in last year and rezoned it to LRO so that it could be a daycare. But now things have changed and want to use it as a residential property, which really this is in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So I think that makes all the sense in the world to make this a residential property. But we do have some issues. There's been ongoing code enforcement issues with the, I believe it's a tree service, but with a lot of equipment being stored on the property that, you know, large trucks, the, can't think of what you call them, the chippers. I think we've even had some other heavy equipment stored on the property, which isn't allowed either with your current zoning. If it was a commercial property, it wouldn't be allowed, or in the residential. So we want to make sure that you understand that those things can't stay even when we rezone it.
Uh, he said they already removed it. I already spoke to them and then it's all gone.
Okay. And one of the things, because it's, it's evident to me that, that there is chain link fencing put up with either canvas over it or some type of covering and some bamboo in order to shield the view of those vehicles, which makes it hard for code enforcement to see and enforce it. Because one of the things is in either your current zoning or the zoning you're going to, you're only allowed to park vehicles on what we call hardened surface, basically asphalt or concrete. So I want to make sure you understand that vehicles can't be parked back there on the rock that was brought in to park them on. That's, that's not allowed.
Yeah, he already said that before. They, they would do that and I spoke to them and he already got that under control already.
Okay, good, good. And what we're going to ask, one, because it's blocking code enforcement from being able to see back there, but two, it's rather unsightly, is to remove from the chain link fencing all the tarps and bamboo and that kind of stuff so that we can have a clear view back there since the enforcement's been an ongoing issue. Is that, if you want to explain that?
Okay, yeah, he said he'll go ahead and talk to them and.
Okay. Okay. And then the other thing is the existing driveway, and maybe because of the heavy equipment, it's become worse, but it has some areas where it's falling apart and kind of not there. So we need to get the existing driveway repaired so that there aren't holes in it and big cracks and, and things like that.
Okay, yeah, he said go ahead and get that fixed as well.
Okay. Okay. I think that's the issues, just so that we understand. No commercial vehicles, no trailers, no equipment, any of that, just normal residential vehicles at the property. Okay, I don't have any questions. Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Would you want to put a timeline on repair timetable?
There would be, yeah.
Okay.
And what I'm looking at is probably 60 days from Board of Commissioners' hearing. So once it's, once they actually approve it, you'd have 60 days to make the repairs of taking down the stuff off the fencing and repairing the driveway.
Madam, that's el apurata la negra.
Just the, um, the tarp that you said was on top, does it, what he has to remove?
Yeah, taking off tarping, you can leave the chain link fence, but also repairing the driveway.
Yeah, he said it'll get done by the week.
Okay. Okay, good. We'll give you extra time just to be safe. Okay, you can have a seat if you like, and then I'll.
Thank you very much. I can have a seat.
I'm giving them a second to sit down before I start the motion so they can hear.
So they can hear.
With regard to Z53, I make a motion that we recommend approval subject to all the following. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. The site plan received May 15, 2018. Remove all covering, tarps, bamboo, et cetera, on the chain link fencing within 60 days of the Board of Commissioner's final decision on the case. The view to the property behind the existing chain link fence shall not be obstructed. No additional privacy fencing to be constructed. No parking of any vehicles, trailers, or equipment behind the fencing. Parking on existing driveway only. No heavy equipment, tree service equipment, or commercial vehicles to be parked on the property. The existing driveway to be repaired to replace deteriorated concrete within 60 days of the Board of Commissioner's final decision on the case. And the district commissioner may approve minor modifications except for those that increase the density. We have no buffers, so that doesn't apply. Or any change that's in conflict with the expressed stipulations or conditions of zoning or would require a variance or violate Scott County ordinance. And I think we could place this on the consent agenda for the Board of Commissioners.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
No, sorry.
We have a motion and a second by Andy. All of us in favor? And that is approved 4 to 0. Thank you. Out of nowhere. John, what's our next?
Yes, ma'am. Hey, Tanisha, can you remind them to come back in two weeks? Thank you.
Okay. Moving into the open space applications, OSC dash O1, Province Homes LLC, requests rezoning from R20 to R20 OSC for the purpose of a single-family subdivision in Land Lot 209 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Luther Ward Road and on the northwest and southeast sides of Midway Road. The applicant is represented as present. Is there anyone here opposed to this resoning? This case, please raise your hands. The record shows there's two people opposed or three people opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in. Okay, four. Yep.
Kevin, we're ready when you are.
Good, good morning and thank you very much. I'm here on behalf of Province Homes in this application for an open space community approval. For those that may not be familiar with that process, we have a tract of property that is 29 acres. It's located almost at the intersection of Luther Ward and Midway. It was actually rezoned in 2006 to R20 for 42 homes. What we are proposing and what Province Homes is proposing is simply the overlay. That is, to overlay that R20 with the open space community. That's what OSC is for, rules and guidelines and regulations for a plan. If you want to do that as a developer or owner, then that process comes through and looks and feels much like a zoning process, though it's really not rezoning the property. What it's really doing is having public input, public hearings by the planning commission and followed by the Board of Commissioners on a new design or a new site plan that takes into account the open space community rules and requirements. But it otherwise doesn't change the underlying density, otherwise doesn't change what the property could be developed for, just changes the manner and what we think is a far, far better and more beneficial manner of development. In this case, Province Homes, which is one of our preeminent builders and home builders and developers here in Cobb County, is proposing for this 29 acres, a total of 42 homes, a maximum of 42 homes. And from a density standpoint, that's 1.55 units per acre, so well within the very low-density residential. In addition, from a density comparison, surrounding subdivisions, Lost Mountain Estates is 1.7, Ivy Green adjacent to the west is 1.73, Darby Place subdivision 1.88, Oakley 2.0, units per acre. All of those subdivisions which are adjoining or in the immediate circle around this property are zoned either R20, zoned R20 OSC, Open Space Community, or PRD, which was Planned Residential Development, kind of a precursor to our open space community. What I, what I want to show you on the screen right now is for more informational purposes, but this is the site plan that was approved as part of the 2006 zoning of this property by the Board of Commissioners. It was rezoned to R20 for a maximum of 42 homes. And you can see in the bottom right corner, the stamp from the Cobb County Community Development Agency. They still haven't changed their stamp, but that's the stamp from 2006. And that, on the top left-hand corner, you'll see the clerk's stamp as well that is noting that this is part of that rezoning. And so this is what this property is entitled for today, 42 homes at R20. There was some stipulations that went along with that, but this is what it's zoned for. Next, I'm going to have Mr. Tyler switch to what we're proposing as an overlay plan. This would now be what is an R20 OSC plan for 42 homes. And I'm going to step over here and just kind of show you where those benefits come from once he gets that going. Thanks.
Thanks, David. Now turning to the actual open space community plan. What this plan does, and from an open space community standpoint, a couple of key components. Obviously, the largest component of that type of plan is open space and a preservation, preservation of a minimum of 35% open space. And you can see what this plan has done is preserve a large portion of open space in this location here, which incorporates a small amount of wetlands that's here. There's a small portion of an existing lake that's in the Ivy Green here, located here. That's also part now of the open space. In addition, we have large swath of open space going down Midway Road, which also includes some wetlands that are along in this area. What that does from an open space design is it takes environmentally sensitive wetland areas as well as portions of the lake and Lake Buffer and wetland areas here, as well as very buildable areas located here, and transforms that and designates that as open space. And what does that mean under the Cobb County open space requirements as well as our stipulation letter that we've made very clear? Is any, any areas identified as open space therefore remain undisturbed. They're not to be disturbed or to be developed in the future. We've actually specifically eliminated and limited that there will be no active recreational amenities for this project as it's only 42 homes. But in terms of areas designated as open space located here primarily and here, as well as some other smaller areas, that means those are undisturbed and will be placed in a conservation easement in favor of Cobb County. That means they're ultimately protected and permanently protected. And they're not contained within individual homeowner's lots where you can say all day long that you want them to be protected. But once they're inside of a lot that somebody owns, that endangers them and puts them at risk in the future for an unwitting or unknowing future homeowner. Mr. Dave Raiden would say that all day long. He prefers that these areas be protected because of their stormwater benefits and set aside and placed and owned by the HOA and with a conservation easement in favor of Cobb County. In addition, we have, again, the 42 lots. We have the open space that's preserved. We have also been in very initial discussions with Mr. Tippins, who owns the property located to our north. What we had initially provided was for a, what was a 25-foot buffer, open space buffer, that would be undisturbed. That way we're identified and as such, we're working with him both in terms of whether that should be, remain as open space and also, we're also going to be working with him on a particular type of fence along that shared property line. And so we feel like those are two fairly easy issues to work with and come to an agreement with Mr. Tippins on as, as we move forward. But I did, I told him I would say that, and so I wanted to make sure I said that for the record and presentation, that we intend to work that out with him and feel 100% confident that we would work that through with, with Mr. Tippins. In addition, we've had extensive discussions with the Ivy Green subdivision, which as I said, is adjacent to our west. We have a small portion of an existing lake that's located on our property. We've had extensive discussions with their homeowners association as well as what they call their lake owners association. In their instance, there's actually eight individual lot owners of the lake that lies adjacent to us. It's not in an OSC, it's in a standard R20. So you actually have eight private owners of a lake in the adjacent Ivy Green. We've met with their leadership in our stipulation letter dated September 26. Contains stipulations and conditions specifically that we worked on with them so that we could ensure protection of the lake from both a stormwater and erosion control standpoint, as well as we've had the beginning discussions of how we'll work with them going forward. Because as you can see, a portion of the lake is located on our property as well. And so there will need to be some level of coordination, cooperation, and ultimately we think an agreement between the HOAs that we would establish and structure with them for the orderly and appropriate structure of how that lake will be treated and handled well into the future. And we think that that'll work well for all parties involved. In addition, we've had many other stipulations that are within your package, as well as staff comments that include providing for the decorative and fencing to mark off open space areas. We also have DOT recommendations for the decel lane and left turn lane on Luther Ward Road that are also part of this comments and package.
Again, we believe that this is actually a prime, if not one of the single best examples of OSC design on a piece of property. You have an existing recently rezoned property for 42 lots, but that was simply R20 that didn't provide for the permanent protection of those open space areas, wetlands, or the lake that's on this property. By employing OSC design standards that are found within the Cobb County ordinance, what this does is simply take those areas and set them aside and you get somewhat smaller lots without compromising density, without compromising anything other than really the rears of lots by, by most accounts when you look at this site plan. These lots are all a minimum of 75 feet in width, about more than half of them are 90 to 100 feet or more in width. So what you're having with this subdivision, those are typical standard R20 subdivision wit, lot widths. When you drive through this subdivision, once it would be built, you wouldn't notice that the spacing of an R20 subdivision will be the same here because the spacing, the lot width, the types of homes that will be built, it'll all look the same. What, what you do have and what you benefit from here, though, is the large expanses of open space that will be permanently preserved to the benefit of not just this community, but the adjoining community as well, which we think is what OSC is designed and intended to do. With that, I'm here to answer any questions. Mr. David Swells is as well, principal of Province Homes. And we respectfully request your recommendation of approval. Thank you.
We'll hear from the opposition at this time.
Good morning. I'm Charles Sprayberry with the Cobb County School District. Approval of this petition continues to cause concern for Cobb County School District as it will result in an impact on enrollment for schools already significantly over capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Nancy Saliba May. I'm a homeowner on Midway Road, a property owner, and my family has owned property on Midway Road for 55 years. My main concern in coming today to represent myself, as well as my mother, who's 92 years old and can't be here, is our concern about traffic. So I think our concerns tie in with the overall density issue that was just mentioned on behalf of the school district. Having lived on Midway Road and owned property there as long as we have, we can speak from firsthand experience about the unique situation of this road. It is a small, narrow road, it is very twisty, it has topographical changes, and there is a very high incidence of accidents on this road, including just last year, the tragic fatality of our neighbor's son, who was hit and killed by a car while out for an evening walk, just 100 feet up the road from where we own property. There have been other accidents that have involved fatalities as well on this road, a head-on collision some years ago, and another accident that involved a Paulding County resident. So this is an area in which there have been a lot of accidents. And I could speak to some other concerns as well with the wetlands and, and the use of the open space and the maintenance of it. Those would be ongoing concerns that might be addressed as this development is looked at further. But the issue of the traffic is one that has just been increasing more and more on Midway Road, with nothing ever done to address that. The traffic travels at a very high rate of speed on that road, despite it just being a 35 mile an hour zone, and there just doesn't seem to be anything that happens with it, except just more and more high-speed traffic all the time. It's gotten to where we can't mow or even get mail out of the mailbox without cars just whizzing by a few inches away. So I think my main concern, again, is a homeowner that would be affected by this development at its current density, is the impact of an additional 100 or plus cars from a 42-acre home, I mean, excuse me, a 42-home site development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Lord.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I would say that as the plan is drawn right now, I would speak in opposition to it. My family has owned the adjacent property to this on the north line for 62 years. That doesn't mean that the land has to stay exactly like it was in 1956. I realize changes have to take place, but there are several issues that I'd like to speak with, and I'm somewhat conflicted, because I feel like I'm here among family. Kevin Moore is a good friend of mine, his daddy's been a good friend a long time. Mr. Swales is a customer of mine. Wardling and Wand, I knew them when they were kids, and their grandparents were like grandparents to me. So I think there's a land that I'm trying to convey, that I'd like to give to your consideration. I own the property, I don't live on the property. My son, daughter-in-law, and two grandchildren live there. And I realize change has to take place. In the 1960s, there was not a traffic light from downtown Square in Marietta to the courthouse in Paulding County on Dallas Highway. Things have changed a lot, I've seen it change. I'm not opposed to change, but I want to take the long term on change and bring several things to your attention. First, I'd like to point out that the set of drawings that I had did not show an undisturbed buffer, and I think those were the ones that were submitted to P and Z. Several years ago, there was another subdivision within a mile of this that was required to have a 100-foot undisturbed buffer. That's too much. Zero is too little. Somewhere in the middle, there needs to be an undisturbed buffer on adjacent properties. This is the only property, this is my property, is the only property adjacent to this development that does not have an undisturbed buffer. If you look on the west, there's a considerable buffer to the western property owners. On the right, you have a lake and wetlands that is undisturbed. So I'd like to have your consideration there. One thing that has concerned me, and it does about, and it, is I have served in a, in a public position. A lot of times, it's not so much the light size, but it's the, it's the product that's put on it. I know the developer, I've seen the projects that he's done, and he had, he, historically, put in a very high-end product, which that gives me some relief, if there's any way we can guarantee the product that's going to be there. The light size really does not bother me as much as the product that's going to be on it. But as a, as a, the fact is, the adjoining property, Ivy Green, was zoned to be a true R20. It had some land that couldn't be used, but every lot in it was at least 20,000 square feet. I think the property across the road, across Luther Ward Road, Lost Mountain Estates, we've been told that it's R20, I believe it's R30. I put the water line in that 45 years ago. I would, I'm concerned about the adjacent properties, or the lots to my property, for two reasons. Number one, under the R20 straight zoning, I would have had four neighbors, under this one, I have seven. This one shows no undisturbed buffer. I would like to ask that those lots on the adjacent property line, on the property line adjacent to me, would be at least 20,000 square foot lots, which would be in keeping with those on my back property land. I'm obviously concerned about the school overcrowding. I think we need to look at when the relief is coming and what it, and what the projected plan in SPOS 5 is going to be. Is it going to be just an addition, or is it going to be another school? From school board days, the timing of all of that would be critical. I understand that the product that you put there very likely will control the load, the potential load on the school. So that's one thing I would ask you to look at. Another would be how many buildable lots are available under the current R20 zoning. I have, for me to tell you that I am opposed to rezoning in development, I'd be a hypocrite, because I've been in this business almost 50 years, in the pipeline business. So I'd be a hypocrite to tell you I'm against it. But from that, you get some experience. And under the 42 lots that are shown on that plan, I question whether three or four of them could even be built on, because they have wetlands in the middle of them. I think people have a right to develop their property. I think they don't need to be tied to what was there 50 years ago. But I also think it needs to be very reasonable, and I think it does not need to do damage to the adjacent property or pose a hazard. I've got almost 23 acres there. It's a farm, we've got horses, we've got donkeys on it, we've got dogs, we've got deer. I just, I'd like some consideration, I'd like some protection from trespassing. It has gotten to be in our society today that if you have open land, people think it belongs to them, unless you, almost if you don't have a shotgun guard at the line. I would like protection. I would like larger lots that are adjoining me. I've got a lake on my property. The lake that this, that is, the portion of the lake, or the lake that this rezoning has a portion of dumps directly into my lake. There again, the developer of Ivy Green was a good friend of mine, and he was a client of mine. But my lake's never been the same since they developed Ivy Green. We had a problem with runoff, we had a problem with seiltation. Of course, that subdivision dumped directly into my lake. But the biggest problem that we've had in the meantime is on the water quality, not so much in runoff. You can handle the amount of runoff, but the water quality, because all of the petroleum residue that comes from automobiles on non-pervious surfaces, it goes to the retention pond, it's lighter, it floats on top of the water, and when it runs out to the top, it goes to the structure below it that retains it, which in that case, it'll be in the Ivy Green Lake, and then subsequently, it'll be in my lake. I'd like for you to consider that as well. I think there's things that can be done on that. I appreciate the dilemma that you're in as a planning commission, because I realize Cobb County is very dynamic. Atlanta has a very good growth. I'd like to ask you, though, that we would have time to work this out and try to come to an agreement as to what makes sense for all the property owners. I am concerned that my property does not have a buffer on it, in light of the other buffers that are afforded. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Lindsay. The hearing is seeing no other opposition. This is closed, the opposition is closed. It went over like 36 seconds. Kevin, if you want to talk for 36 seconds, no. So it'll be back to this morning, it'll be back to scale.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman. Coming into this, this hearing, I've received probably 20 emails from residents of Ivy, Ivy Green subdivision, all concerning their lake and the preservation of that lake that they, you know, the some 7 or 8 or 9 homeowner share. I've been concerned about the, the buffer along the northern side of this, this parcel in the proposed site plan. The early, early submitted site plan did not have a buffer. The most recently developed site plan has a 20-foot buffer. Kevin has now said that, you know, there's some discussion surrounding that with Mr. Tippins to the north, and now we just heard from Mr. Tippins, that there is significant discussion around that. I'm, I think I'm of the, well, I want to make a couple of points, but I'm going to be moving, I think, towards holding this for further discussion. With respect to the, the traffic issue that somebody, that one of the, the lady in opposition brought up, what's being proposed is 42 single-family dwellings on this property. What's been approved in the, the previous rezoning for R20 was, was basically 42 lots, a density that would yield 42 lots. So the same, the traffic would be the same. I understand, and I sympathize, and I'm concerned about the growing traffic problem, which I think is our biggest problem from a zoning point of view in this county. I'm concerned about that, and I'm always looking for ways to reduce that, particularly in areas where the traffic is exceptionally bad. And I think along Midway Road, I've driven that, we all probably have driven that, and people do speed up and down there. It's a beautiful road, but it's, it's easy to go right at the speed limit or slightly over. So I understand that issue. But from a zoning point of view, it's, it's hard to, to say that we can't do a development on this property when it's already zoned a certain way because of the increase in traffic. The, the, the school issue is another issue very similar. The property would hold 42 single-family dwellings as currently zoned. What's being proposed is 42 single-family dwellings, which yield however many children that they would statistically yield to go into the schools. As Judy has said many times in the past, I don't think there's ever been a student that Cobb County School District has turned away. That's their obligation. They've known in this particular parcel that it's zoned R20, and that eventually, that kind of density would be put on this, this property most likely. So they've had time to plan for it, there is SPOS money coming forward for enhancements and expansions to the schools involved. So I don't really feel like that's a significant issue that would cause us to deny this. Having, having said all of that, this property screams to me to be zoned open space community with the OSC overlay, just because of the topography, the wetlands, the, the lake, and so forth. And I know that from a general point of view, the, if it were developed that way, it's going to be a much, much more attractive development for everybody involved. People going up and down the roads, what they would see, because it would be restricted to be internal with buffers. For the people who live on the property, because they would have the open space to enjoy, it would just be a much superior design plan from the R20, straight R20 zoning that it currently is zoned for. Unfortunately, what that does is, when you take 35% of the, the space, or even more in some cases, but in this case, I think that's what it is, and make that open space to get the same lot count, the lots have to be less. Our code allows for that. The code for R20 says minimum 13,000 square foot lots, I believe, and that's, this satisfies that requirement. The, the result of that, from the north boundary perspective, the northern border adjacent to Mr. Tippins' property, is that the lot count along there, what I would call the backlot ratio, the number of lots that would face his property, would necessarily goes up, everything else being equal, from what it would be with the R20, straight R20 zoning. I'm wondering if we hold this, if there's some opportunity for Providence to redesign the site plan somewhat to reduce that backlot ratio, or to increase that buffer, or to do something to mitigate what's going to happen along that northern buffer. So I think those are the, the issues. I'm going to make a motion that we hold this. Well, let me, let me bring Kevin back. Where's Kevin? If you can come back, Kevin. Yeah, let me, let me first say that I think you've done a very, very nice job in working with all the neighbors involved who have presented themselves to address their concerns and to, you know, to deal effectively with their concerns.
Thanks.
I'm sorry?
I said, thank you for saying that.
I heard it coming from that way, and I'm just...
I promise it was not gall.
Along, along this process, you and I've talked about, is Mr. Tippins happy with the, you know, the situation along that northern buffer, that northern border? And, and the answer is, we're working on it, and, you know, we, we want to make sure that he's happy. And so I've respected that. If we hold this for a month, so that you can go back and, and work with your client and with Mr. Tippins to come up with a, an adjusted plan of some sort, would you be willing to, to do that?
Yes, we don't have any problem with that whatsoever. Mr. Swales obviously knows, Mr. Tippins, we all do, I do as well, I feel like we could work with him and, and come up with a reasonable solution there. He just, as, as he shared with me, some of the comments that he shared here, not all of them are, they're, the comments that he has are things that we just need to sit down with him on and find out what, how we can make that come together. But I don't, they're not inconsistent with what we're trying to do from an open space or subdivision standpoint, and with what he wants. I just think it's more a matter of just having that additional time. So we'd, we'd actually appreciate it and love to do it.
Okay, and if we were to do that, that would give you additional time also to work with the Ivy Green subdivision, to come up with an agreed-upon agreement with them on exactly how that lake is going to be managed.
Yeah, there, and we may be able to do that by then. It's kind of their, the ball was in their court for that, based on our meeting. And they know that we're, that is the plan, because it's really, it's the only thing that we can do from a future standpoint. And if they'll get back with us on how they would like that to look, there was a couple of questions that they needed to answer for us, and when they do, then we'll be able to wrap that up.
Well, let's, let's see if we can...
We're happy to do all of that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that.
Sure.
So that's, that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
So let's see if we can get that done. So I'm going to make a motion, we hold this for a month until our next hearing in November. Yes, a question, but we need a second.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? We have a motion. Do I have a second?
For discussion.
Any discussion?
My question's regarding the little piece of open space that's not contiguous with the, on the other side of Midway. Is, John, is that, does that open space to count as part of the thirty-five percent? Does that have to be contiguous with the...
It normally is contiguous, Commissioner Smith, but this is kind of a special circumstance because the road does bisect the property. And there really is nothing negative. There is, I guess I could put one lot on it, but, but their choice to leave it as open space.
Okay. And it does count towards the thirty-five percent?
Yeah, it did, yeah.
And, and I'll just make a comment about that. I know in times past, that's been an issue, but with this one, what this would do is if, if the developer were to put a lot on that little triangular piece, that would just add another driveway on Midway Road, which has already got traffic issues. And so for that reason, I felt that it was, and I agree with staff, that it was appropriate to include it as open space and to allow all the traffic to have the, the access on Ward Road and, and not further clutter that Midway with, with another driveway.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Call the vote. And that's approval forty-zero. John, that concludes, except for our public hearing.
That concludes the, the land use part of the hearing. There are two other business items that you need to hear next.
Okay. We're going to take a quick ten-minute break and then we'll be right back.
Prime time.
Welcome back. At this time, the zoning portion is finished and we have two public hearings that we need to address regarding code amendments. And Dana is going to present those code amendments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's see if we can get that up on the screen and then we will jump right in. Perfect. So as is, as was required, we always come forward and receive thoughts and recommendations for the planning commission, from the planning commission on alterations being recommended to Chapter 134 of the Cobb County Code, which is the zoning ordinance. We have three particular areas that are up for consideration by the Board. The Board Commissioners had their first public hearing at the second meeting in September last week. And on October twenty-third, I think it is, October twenty-third, correct, at 7:00 PM, they will have their second public hearing on all of the code amendments. So this is the sections for Chapter 134 dealing with zoning. You can see here on this, on the screen, the other, other sections of the code that have been considered, but today we will concentrate on Chapter 134, the last one. So there are three changes. The first one deals with a change in definitions. This is under 134-1. This is the definition for eating and drinking establishment. And this is where we are recommending that brew pubs be added into the definition of, of eating and drinking establishments in compliance with the Department of Revenue requirements. Department of Revenue considers brew pubs as restaurants, even though they're brewing their own beer there. So we're really just comporting our zoning ordinance with the requirements of the state to treat them the same. Under RM12, which is 134-206, this is a change that came forward from the request by the Board of Commissioners during a zoning hearing this past year, where there was a case where they were trying to do detached dwelling units under an RM12 zoning district. So obviously it had a whole lot of variances when that came forward. I was asked by the Board to kind of come back and look at how we could authorize this under the RM12 code itself. So we brought that forward. Let me just kind of go through a couple areas that are, are contained in this, so the, so the commission's fully aware of everything that's in here. One of the things that we've done is we, we have added a component for workforce housing, where if they did build a percentage of workforce housing and sold them as workforce housing, that they would be able to obtain a density bonus of ten percent if they were to do that. Under this definition, that would be maxed at a hundred percent of the AMI of a particular region, of, of our Atlanta region. Under Section D, this kind of contains a lot of the specifications that are being considered as part of this. One is a twenty-foot perimeter buffer around the development when it's adjacent to other residentially zoned properties. A setback of fifteen feet from a private roadway, if they decided to do rear-entry garages, that could be reduced down to zero. So it could kind of be in, in urban style where the, the front of the house is close to the street, but it would need to have rear access and rear-entry garages for that setback to be reduced. This would have a minimum setback of five feet between homes. If it did go any closer than five feet between homes, there is an important section of the building code that would require additional restrictions on the home for it to be in compliance. Basically, it deals with some fire ratings and the lack of any obstructions through the wall that would then allow for fires to easily jump between structures. So it's very important that, that that be in there so people are aware of the additional requirements if it does creep any closer than five feet. If there is less than ten feet between homes, our recommendation is that all utility meters and boxes and air conditioning units and everything else be placed at the back of the unit, to make sure there's enough space there and you're not crowding up a, a tight space by adding pieces of equipment. Obviously, we don't want it in the front yard. So we're going to recommend that everything get placed in the back in order to, to, to allow access for that. And lastly, certainly, as, as normal, the Board of Commissioners certainly has the ability to make any conditions on, on developments to come forward in regard to this. So that covers the RM12 portion of it. Also, under 134-217 is the planned village commercial, and staff is recommending a reduction of the contiguous acres from fifty feet to twenty feet for this particular, for the overall track size. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have and certainly ask you to open a public hearing in regard to it.
A public hearing is open for the code amendments. Is there anyone here in opposition or would like to speak to any of the proposed amendments? Jason doesn't. Jason didn't. No, Jason, you cannot come out. Hearing and seeing no one speaking, let's back to this board to discuss, for discussion. And got you on legal?
Sure. I'll start off. I think the brew pubs is fine. I don't think we have any objection to that. The RM12, I think getting rid of the not to exceed five acres per unit makes sense because if this is supposed to be a high-density area that this zoning would be in, then I think if they can reasonably put more houses in there, that's fine. And then the, I do have a problem with the workforce housing portion because, in my opinion, and I'm not an attorney, but in my opinion, I believe it would violate fair housing laws. Because what you're doing is, not only does the fair housing law say you can't restrict something, it also says you can't encourage to go one way instead of everywhere. So I think if we're going to put anything in the zoning ordinance for workforce housing, it has to be an across-the-board, all residential districts, so that we don't run across that fair housing issue. So I don't think, I know that's absolutely not the intent. People are trying to encourage fair housing here, affordable housing, but it's just, I think we're going down a, an area that we probably shouldn't be. I also don't quite think fifteen percent affordable housing is quite enough if you're going to give that kind of ben, density bonus, but that's a, that's a minor thing with the overall. And I think Andy had mentioned before that we might be referencing the wrong metro area region because there's a Marietta-Sandy Springs metro region.
The, under, under the HUD, the, under the, under the Census Bureau, it is Sandy Springs, Marietta, Atlanta. Under the HUD guidelines for AMI, it's just considered the Atlanta area.
Okay.
We did, take a look at that and make sure we had the right one. But I'll, we'll verify one more time before the final version comes forward.
Okay. As far as setbacks and that, I'm not comfortable that every circumstance that a zero front setback would make sense. There may be some that it would in some areas, like in the, you know, Cumberland area and that. So I really thought more that maybe the setback should be site plan specific as determined by the Board of Commissioners, much like we do an OSC or something on these. They have to bring a plan forward and have them because depending on where you're putting them, I think it can make a big difference as to, as to what and whether you want that really urban feel or whether it needs a little bit more suburban with some room for some landscaping. With the, if the distance is less than ten feet between buildings, makes sense to put all the utilities back there, but there were comments about air conditioners or other things should also be moved to the back. So maybe something that says, you know, no things can be placed between those buildings.
We added some language in here under kind of a catch-all and other similar items. That was our attempt to try to create a catch-all that would make it clear that everything had to be to the back of the building.
Okay, okay.
But I like the idea of adding air conditioners outright.
Right.
So that's, that's something we're going to incorporate into. That's, that's a good suggestion.
Okay. And I just had a, a question, and it may be that I got misinformation before, but last year, Rock investigated the building code for me when we were looking at, at one of these, and I don't think it's this, but a different one. And I thought he had said if you go more than seven and a half feet, set, less than seven and a half feet separation, that the building code triggered the, the firewalling and all of that versus five here. That's, I mean, I know the building code's going to control it.
I, I spoke with the chief building official and he, he told me there was five feet between the structures that triggered the requirements for the firewalls and the no obstruct, no obstructions through the wall, through the firewall.
Okay. So just, and I thought he, but anyway, that's, that's that one. So I think, you know, kind of my thought is, you know, that, that when somebody wants to do one of these, they need to bring a site plan forward and get it approved and, and it can be looked at because if you're increasing density, it depends on what it's next to a lot of times and all kinds of things that are hard to put in here, much like we do the OSC on a site plan specific basis. But I like the idea of allowing higher density in an RM12. And I also wonder, should we bring that same change forward in an RM16? If that would be practical and also whether it applies to an RM8, which, because all of those currently require, if you do attached or detached, it would be that. I, I also had, do we want to allow if they're doing attached units to get down to as small as five feet between buildings? If you're doing attached, I understand that detached...
Because then there's separate buildings. I, I...
Yeah, you know, I, I kind of think maybe that five feet should only be if they're doing detached units. So...
I think we would create too much of a bias if you let the buildings, the separate buildings go within that five feet. So I, I don't really think that we need to do that.
Yeah. So that's, that's another...
Detached is fine, but...
Right.
I would have concerns about a building itself.
So that's my thought there. And then on, uh, moving on to the PVC, I think a reduction is definitely needed because there aren't enough properties that fit fifty acres and baked-suse developments up there. So, and we're only setting down a minimum of twenty. The only worry is, when it's twenty, we all of a sudden get the people that have eighteen, nineteen acres who are going to come in for a variance. So is twenty taking it down too far? Should we say twenty-five or something up in there? So that's...
Yeah.
That's my only concern. We're cutting it more, more than in a half. You know, we're taking out sixty percent right now. You know, so that's, yeah, but I don't know the magic number there, really. I haven't looked at enough of them to know, but that was just a thought on it.
Thank you.
Let somebody else comment.
No, if you want to, go ahead.
Okay. Well, the, the two things that stick out to me that, that bother me are, I understand the, you know, the, the motivation for increasing, you know, for trying to get workforce housing to provide some economic incentive, but to have a density bonus, I don't like that. And, and I'll explain why, but the, the second one is, for the same reason, the PVC is going from fifty to twenty acres, that basically is allowing more density in smaller areas. I think in Cobb County, and the reason I don't like either one of those is in Cobb County, we hear over and over and over that we're overcrowded. The roads are overcrowded, the schools are overcrowded. And I know that there are ways to address those things. But the, the quality of life that, you know, if you cut through the chase with what everybody's saying, the quality of life that we're enjoying, especially, you know, for example, in West Cobb, where we try to have, maintain a rural quote-unquote kind of an oxymoron environment, we keep doing things that increase the density. And so anything that takes us the other way, I like. Anything that moves us in the direction of increased density, I have a problem with. And, and so, you know, I, I, I don't like either one of those two changes. I agree with the comment about all the setbacks. It's really site plan specific and, and to try to, you know, presuppose what it needs to be in a, in a, you know, much more dense kind of way, in effect, I don't like. I'd rather see it be done on a case-by-case site plan basis, site plan specific basis. So, you know, those, those are my thoughts. I'm okay with brew pubs. I don't see any reason to, you know, feel otherwise on that. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Andy?
I was afraid you were going to make me hit cleanup.
No.
Everything's already been said.
Yeah. Like the brew pubs. I've really kind of the same concerns over the, the way, over trying to put the workforce housing in with the RM12. I think it's very important that everybody in Cobb County have a chance to live, work, play in Cobb County. You don't have to live outside of Cobb County if you don't have the income to afford a home here. It's, that's, that does seem to be something we need to address, but I'm just not, I don't understand how it really gets addressed well in this way. I think that in apartment, home, it could be addressed a whole lot easier. Income is much more a direct determiner of your ability to rent that apartment than to buy a home, which has so many other factors. I think it'd be impossible to, to control. But I'll, but I applaud the attempt to, to work on this and, and maybe there's a way that I'm just not seeing to do it, but I don't, I don't see it in this particular paragraph. As usual, Gault and Skip have pointed out some things that I had not considered, but I agree completely with the idea that the rear driveway should not be an automatic elimination of the fifteen-foot setback. I think all that being site plan specific and subject to the Board of Commissioners' approval would be, you know, would be perfectly appropriate. We do so many things that way and we do it that way because it works. And I'd have to agree with Skip about the reducing the fifty contiguous acres to twenty. I, I know that there was the bait, we talked in the work session about the, the reason for this and, and that it was felt that earlier zoning this year would have been, this would have been an appropriate size for, for that. But it worked in that one case. I, maybe, I don't, it doesn't mean to me that it would, that it should generate a, a change to the code. So I hope we come up with a, with a really good way to do this workforce housing because that's an important, important issue.
I think we, in discussing it, we had into the RM12, our comments were basically the same. We're trying to figure out a way where they can come in. The older apartment complexes, instead of doing apartment, because we do have a lot of apartments, the older ones that come in for the residential, we want to see that. And the setbacks, I understand those. And I don't think any of us are opposed to the setbacks, the five-foot, ten-foot between. We're not opposed to that. The five foot, 10 foot between, we're not opposed to that as long as nothing is put in that setback area because they couldn't work on their houses if we put too much in the setback area. So that has to be, and I think you've made a note of that, but on that. The, I understand about the affordable housing, the workforce. I don't understand how we came up with these numbers, but I understand what we're trying to achieve. I'm not sure that this is going to help us achieve it, but I do understand why it's put in here. And the other is the 50 acres versus 20. Like the opinion that maybe we should have just cut it in half, like from 50 to 25 instead of going down to 20. So those would be my comments. Sure.
On, on the PVC going from 50 to 20 issue, I guess, I wasn't at the work session and so I, I didn't get the benefit of refreshing my memory about that case this past year. But in a case, if there is a case where PVC, PVC concept makes sense and it, but the total property is less than 50 acres, the traditional way of handling that, if PVC makes sense, is to just allow variance on the 50, 50 acres, right? What's wrong with continuing to take that approach? That's my question.
I, I think the reason that I thought of or think is that we don't have 50 contiguous acres much in Cobb County anymore. Especially, probably your area has it more than any.
Two.
Any, any other areas. You don't have it down in the south part of the county. You don't have it in the findings. There's so many places in Cobb County, you can't do that 50 contiguous. I'm not even sure you'd be stretching it in West Cobb to do 50.
Probably.
It's important to note too, that the PVC is only allowed in the CAC and RAC future leniency categories. So we're really talking about the more urban areas of the county, not as much the suburb, suburban areas. I'm not saying that there's not CAC in some areas of West Cobb because there are. And I would, I wouldn't be, the Home Depot Center is a good example of a CAC that's in, that's in West Cobb. But most of your racks and CACs are in your more urban areas of the county. So this is why the PVC is a more urban style zoning district. And if it wasn't inappropriate in any area of the county, certainly the planning commission would make a recommendation that they saw fit if they thought it wasn't fitting in the area. And certainly the Board of Commissioners would follow suit.
I think so. I think too, like I said, I don't think you're going to see 50 acres. We might as well address it now.
That was one of the reasons why staff brought this forward is because of the, the, pretty much everything would have to be, just about everything would have to be variance if, if anyone's going to try to use a mixed use code.
Okay, and I see that where you don't use variance as a rezoning tool, so.
I'll just say Skip, the, the case was Z 16 in 2017 there at Powers Ferry and.
Yes, yeah.
That was the case that we're looking at. And we even said during our work sessions PVC would fit this, except for how do you give a variance of 60%?
Yeah.
Off the land size. I mean, that's just a ridiculous variance. And variance, it's, are supposed to have hardships. So, and nothing prevents it from saying you can bring 50 acres still or 60 acres.
Refresh me, how many acres was Z 16?
I think, what about 21, 22 or something?
I'd say about 23.
23.
So if we did the 25, you'd probably be more.
Be a minor variance to 25, yeah. I, I think pushing that, pushing that number higher rather than lower. Yeah, I resonate with.
Yeah, I did receive some comments that maybe if we reduce it, we should take kind of a harder look at the PVC and make sure everything still fits on a, on a 25. Also, one thing that's never been overly clear to me is how we really calculate density in a PVC. Because only part of it's residential, part of it's commercial, but we tend to use the whole track of land in doing it. And sometimes that distorts the numbers. Like when we were looking at Z 16, it was really distorting the density, even though we weren't using PVC there, but we were using RM 16 or something, but we were saying this is the density of the residential. But we were figuring on the whole 21 acres where only a small portion of it was really residential, so.
That's a small practice when you're doing mixed use throughout, most jurisdictions miss mixed use codes.
Well, but it just seemed to me, especially at that one, and we weren't using mixed use, that we were really distorting the RM zoning that we talked about by using 23 acres when it was, five acres was really the residential part or something. I'm throwing out five acres just as a rough number, but.
Well, from, from, from our, from my perspective, traffic and impact on schools, you know, the net impact on schools and traffic are the, sort of the macro measures, if you will. And density really, you know, it's hard to comprehend what that really means in a situation like that. But if you start talking about traffic, you know, now you have a common, kind of a common way that collectively looks at everything, you know, the, the intensity of impact, if you will.
Yep, exactly.
And, and so maybe there's a way to, to deal with that, you know, so that you, you both, you know, you integrate all the traffic handbook, book numbers to see what the impact, and we do that anyway.
Yeah, usually for these larger developments, our department of transportation will require a traffic study as part of it so they can understand the broader impact on the overall network. And they can have recommendations for improvements based upon that.
But, but the, the point that I'm trying to make is maybe rather than having any kind of mention of density as a criteria for how you develop a PVC, it could be more not to exceed a certain threshold of expected traffic somehow. You know, thoughtfully figured out.
Well, I think. Yeah.
By staff, right.
But I think right now the only thing, and we can address it in other amendments later on, probably next year. But I think the only thing addressed to this board right now is the reduction in acreage from the 50 to 20, 24, whatever we want.
25 is.
And then we have them start, instruct the planning department to start working on the issues of the density that you've been talking about. But in this particular one, we just need to address acreage. So you need a motion from us, don't you?
I have no more comment.
All right. Oh, please, go ahead. Andy, do what you best.
After this heady discussion about density and stuff, but going back to the RM 12, distance between the buildings, when we're talking about obstruction of air conditioners or whatever, I thought you might want to add something about projected items, some other, so that equipment or other projections.
Projections off, of the building.
And, and perhaps along those lines, fences. You know, if somebody puts a fence right down on that property line, that kind of negates, you know, the impact of not having anything else, else there.
Okay, God, you have one more comment?
I just had a comment that maybe on the workforce housing, we should have maybe a special work session or something just to discuss that in ways, if they want it in the zoning ordinance, which I honestly don't think is the best way to handle workforce housing. But, you know, that we can look at some of the issues because, you know, the same concern we had was the one we had with the last go around to it. And I don't know that it's quite getting through that there's a real fair housing and maybe we should have our fair housing attorneys that I know are working on another case really advise us so that we don't go down the wrong path. Because that, that's a big concern to me, that I don't want the county getting in trouble by trying to do something good and actually find out that.
There's going to be a work session on workforce housing at the Board of Commissioners meeting on October 22nd at 1:30.
Is that the same day as our work session?
Unfortunately, I think they are scheduled the same.
At same time.
But it'll be taped and I will make sure I send that to, but what, what staff has been doing with the planning department, CDBG and others was we've been kind of doing a lot of best practice research on other communities and what they do for workforce housing, kind of what are, what is out there for it. And at that work session, we're going to be presenting all of the research that we've done and seeing from the board if there is a preference on how they would want us to move forward with it.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So this have a motion. We need to send it on with a motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I think your next work session's on the 29th.
Oh, okay.
So I would invite you to come to the work session on the 22nd in order to.
So everybody put that on their calendar for the 22nd.
And if you're all coming, then just make sure we tell the clerks so we can let them know that we can advertise it as a public hearing for the planning commission as well.
Okay, yeah, I think we're all interested in that.
Yeah, we said 22nd.
Yes, 22nd.
22nd and 1:30.
1, 1:30.
The Open Meetings Act, there's an exception for training. So if you're there for the training piece, you're not subject to open meetings.
I was just being extra cautious.
Sure, sure. But of course, as the caveat, you cannot discuss any business that comes before this board. You're simply there for the training purposes.
Right, and we would never do that, you know that. We would. Back to this board, God, would you like to?
Okay, I'll make the motions. I'm going to do them in separate motions because we had a lot of different things. Make a motion regarding 134 dash one definitions that we recommend approval of the brew pubs addition.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor? That's approved. That's 134 dash one. Next.
And then for, make a motion for 134 dash 206 subsection three to recommend approval of deleting the not to exceed five units breaker on the detached and attached.
We have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor? That's approved, 40-0.
I make a motion. On mic, sorry. Did I forget to vote on the last one? Did I hit the mic?
Yeah, you did, you're right.
Put me down as a yes on the last one. I make a motion for 134 dash 206 subsection 12B that we recommend denial of that. That's affordable workforce component.
We have a motion, a second. All those. That's approved, 40-0.
Okay, and then for section 134, 206, subsection 12C and. And D changes. I think we can do those together. That we make a recommendation that, that these be site plan specific that need to come before a hearing and be approved for, for all the various components. But, you know, that the. Yeah, I want to include the distance between buildings if it's less than 10, that all the items need to be pushed to the back, which is D four, I think. And I think everything else we can just do on a site plan basis.
On a site plan basis, yeah, I think it'd be fine. So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? 40-0, and then the last one.
Okay, I hope we came to some consensus on this. But for, make a motion, 134, 217, 13C, that PVC shall require 25 contiguous acres.
Second, we have a motion, a second. Call for question? And that's approved, 40-0, and that concludes it.
Thank you. Appreciate it all very much.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Jason. Now we have the Jason with the housing.
All right, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. Again, good morning. I'm here to give a brief presentation about the planning division's work in regards to purpose-built student housing. You all got a, a short version of this presentation at your work session last Monday. The Board of Commissioners was also briefed at their work session last Monday. And you all also received a copy of the draft document that the planning division has prepared in regards to purpose-built student housing and some policy recommendations associated with such. So I'll go through this as quickly as possible to allow ample time for questions and answers. Okay, just to give you a brief overview, that's kind of our outline for the presentation and, and just kind of sets the framework for what we're doing here. Okay, so purpose-built student housing, the whole context of it is related to the challenges of off-campus student housing specifically as it relates to Kennesaw State University and its rapid growth over the past decade or so. You've had a lot, you have a lot of established, single-family residential subdivisions in the general vicinity that as the student population began to grow, rental properties inside a lot of those subdivisions, you know, started being leased out by students, which has caused a bit of a conflict, needless to say, between residents of those neighborhoods and the students who live in rental homes. Noise, parking, overcrowding, other, you know, community or quality of life effects, you know, have been compromised as a result. So that's kind of where, you know, all of this kind of starts. That, in addition to the fact that the university has grown, on-campus student housing has not kept, has not kept pace with that growth. Excellent. Okay, so that brings us to purpose-built student housing, which is also referred to as private student housing. It's privately developed apartments, if you will, that are built oftentimes within the vicinity of a, a college campus that have no direct affiliation with the university. They are completely privately built, operated and maintained. A lot of times people have a misconception about the ownership and the operation of these developments because oftentimes they have names that play off of their presence or proximity to a college or university. So that's a very important distinction. You know, they are completely privately built, operated and maintained. Some other distinguishing factors in regards to purpose-built student housing is that as opposed to a traditional two-bedroom, two-bathroom apartment per se, they are nowadays typically, they are built in these pod formats where you have a common living area slash study area. And then you have individual bedrooms anywhere ranging from one to five per unit. And as a result, the units are leased per bedroom as opposed to the entire unit. So you've got, you know, a four-bedroom pod and a PPSH development, they're leasing each bedroom within that unit instead of the unit as, as a whole per se. It's, 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 like I say, it's typical. And you also see this at a lot of colleges and universities when it comes to the new dormitories, on-campus housing. So the, the private market has kind of played off of that and has, has kind of copied that, that trend. Another distinguishing factor is the academic year being the, the baseline for how the lease terms are run. Instead of, you know, one year from the actual beginning of the lease, they pretty much have aligned the lease terms to pretty much start and end as the academic year takes place. So late July, early August through, you know, May, mid-May, early June, that kind of thing. The amenities, you know, a lot of typical apartment amenities, but also others that are more geared towards college students, such as the study rooms, exercise rooms, barbecue and picnic areas, swimming pools. Some may even have, you know, like lawn, onsite, not laundromats, but, well, yeah, laundry services as well as dry cleaning, that's the term I was trying to think of. Another key point to think of here, and we were just talking about it during the last hearing, is the Fair Housing Act. These developments, while they are geared towards college students, they cannot be leased. The units cannot be leased only to college students because college students are not a protected class under the Fair Housing Act. That would only be seniors aged 55 and over. So there is the potential and the reality that a lot of PBSH developments have non-students living in them as well. Okay, so in 2013, around the time that the market was starting to recover from the recession in 2008 is when. is when, uh, you started to see more of this type of development, uh, occurring in Cobb County. At that time, the planning division staff prepared, uh, a memorandum, uh, containing research about the trend of purpose-built student housing in the county. And this was also, uh, done in conjunction with, uh, some assistance from the staff at the city of Kennesaw as well because they have a couple of, of these types of developments within their jurisdictional limits. So we're looking at about sixty-nine hundred, uh, beds, um, combined between PBSH and on-campus housing. And as of twenty twelve, there were about thirty-five hundred beds that were slated to be, uh, uh, units that had thirty-five hundred beds slated to be built on campus. They had, KSU, that is, Kennesaw State, had a fifteen-hundred-bed housing or dormitory development in the pipeline at that time, and they decided to place it on hold, uh, for various factors, um, none directly related to the, the evolution of PBSH, but it was something that, you know, kind of got put on the back burner. At the time, in twenty thirteen, um, there was a good bit of concern about the potential for overbuilding. It was unfounded at the time, but the rate at which the proposals for these, uh, PBSH developments were coming in, it, it, it kind of raised some concern amongst, uh, commissioners as well as those living in the surrounding community. Next slide. Okay, there you've got a summary of, uh, some summary statistics on the existing PBSH developments, uh, in the county. All except for one, uh, were new builds. One was an, uh, actually a conversion of a traditional apartment, uh, complex to PBSH, which happens to be located, uh, uh, in close proximity to the former Southern Polytechnic State University campus, which is now KSU Marietta, of course. So you're looking at just over thirteen hundred units and nearly forty-two hundred beds within those thirteen hundred units of all PBSH developments in the county. Okay, so now let's look a little bit closer at Kennesaw State. As of fall seventeen, they had nearly thirty-six thousand student enrollment, between the KSU Marietta and the KSU Kennesaw campuses, looking at fifty-two hundred on-campus beds, which, uh, respectively, uh, housed, uh, or could house thirteen percent of the Kennesaw campus's population and twenty-five percent of the Marietta campus's population. Seventy-four hundred total potential beds through new construction and redevelopment of existing housing, um, as of fall twenty seventeen. Next slide. So with that framework put in place, um, here's some of the policy considerations or questions that we as a staff looked at when we were going through this analysis. The rate of growth at Kennesaw State, um, you know, as I said, starting in the early two thousands, early to mid-two thousands is when the university really started to grow and transition from a commuter-based campus to more of a traditional residential-based campus. Different, there've been a few, uh, uh, administrations that have gone through as far as the president of the institution at the time, uh, over the past couple of years, and there have been some shifts, uh, and questions as to how the university would continue to grow, at what rate will it continue to grow? There had been talk of, you know, potentially reducing new student enrollment, cutting back on the number of freshmen that they would accept, things like that. But, you know, that's still a question mark as to, you know, how it will impact the housing needs of both on and off-campus. Speaking of which, freshmen, um, right now, freshmen at the KSU Kennesaw campus are not required to live on campus. However, at KSU Marietta, freshmen are required to live on campus because that was the policy with Southern Polytechnic. Many college campuses across the country require freshmen to live on campus, but, um, you know, the administration is currently looking at whether or not to make a freshman live on requirement, a requirement across the board. So both campuses would be falling under the same, uh, policy when it comes to that. That's something that still hasn't been decided, but, um, um, there's a potential for, uh, uh, a decision on that in the not-too-distant future. KSU's currently working on a market study, um, that's looking to provide a basis for various policy decisions, including, um, how they'll move forward, uh, with providing housing on campus. Okay, so more about the impacts of PBSH, and this kind of goes back to the earlier point about, um, you know, how it's impacted, how prior to PBSH being prevalent, you know, students renting houses in neighborhoods and the impacts that it had on quality of life for, um, um, you know, residents of the established community. As PBSH has evolved, you've had other quality of life impacts that have kind of crossed the line into public safety concerns. Some of the most commonly reported crimes and incidents, uh, between the third quarter of twenty twelve and the first quarter of this year include noise and disorderly conduct, um, traffic accidents, including hit-and-runs, um, illegal parking, on-street parking, theft, breaking and entering, things of that nature, uh, property damage and vandalism. Those have been some of the, uh, through our, um, um, uh, analysis of, uh, statistics provided by the three police departments, um, those are the things that stand out the most. And then there's just a, uh, a quick graph kind of showing you what the trends were. From the summer of twenty twelve through the fall of twenty fourteen, you saw a sharp uptick. But then, um, from the fall of fourteen to date, um, you've seen a, a pretty, a pretty significant decline. However, um, you know, people who live and frequent the area will tell you that there are still, you know, concerns that need to be, you know, addressed and looked after. Okay, so we've talked a little bit about, you know, what it is and some of the negative impacts that PBSH has had. So let's talk a little bit about some of the positive impacts of it. Definitely fills, uh, a need in the market for housing, um, for, you know, a specific population. Financial risk, uh, is a bit decreased on students and families due to the individual leases per bedroom. So for instance, if you go lease a traditional apartment, you're stuck with that lease for that whole unit, and if your roommate bails on you, then you're left holding the whole bag. When it comes to, uh, these pod layouts in PBSH, um, yes, if one roommate leaves, you know, the rent is still due, but there's an opportunity to, um, fill that vacancy without having to restructure the entire lease for the whole unit. So that's where the whole per-bedroom, uh, structure is an advantage. Reduces the demand on single-family conversions, so less impact on those established neighborhoods. And it can also assist some of our community partners with their long-term, um, visions and master planning, particularly the city of Kennesaw and their downtown revitalization efforts, as well as the town's Center Community Improvement District and its efforts to, uh, up its, uh, uh, market share as well. Okay, so in doing this research, we, 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 we took the time to, um, contact some peer communities, uh, and other southeastern locales that, uh, are the home to a college or university or multiple colleges and universities similar in size to Kennesaw State. So with that, we, we dealt with, uh, four peer communities here in state and three that are out of state. I think you all probably know, uh, the ones that are in-state, but the ones out of state specifically, you've got Durham, North Carolina, which is home of Duke University and North Carolina Central University. Then you've got Greenville, North Carolina, which is the home of East Carolina University, and then Tallahassee, Florida, which is the home of Florida State University and Florida A&amp;M University. Okay, so through that research and those conversations, um, here's just a quick summary of what we've, uh, uh, learned. Jurisdictions in Georgia tend to regulate purpose-built student housing, just as any other multifamily development, any other apartment development. It's been used in Athens specifically as a, 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 a real, uh, key piece to downtown redevelopment. You could say the same thing, uh, for Statesboro and Valdosta as well. And in Athens and Atlanta, um, there are specific design standards in the downtown districts that have kind of, uh, crafted the way that student housing has integrated into the existing fabric, as well as helped change the landscape and revitalize areas that, uh, were in one way or another depressed. In Tallahassee, uh, existing mixed-use and planned development zones have been, uh, uh, the, the key pieces to how they've integrated that. Using tools such as, or incentives such as increased density and building height in, uh, in those zones have helped, uh, again, provide the, the need for student housing as well as helped reshape, uh, the, the bones or the structures of the existing community. Higher parking ratios have also helped in that as well to allow for, um, more, or pedestrian-oriented, um, um, activity and less, um, vehicle parking. In Durham and Greenville, the special permit, uh, has been the key to, um, how they've integrated it. They've, uh, used zoning in conjunction with what's the equivalent to our special land use permit uh, in order to help, uh, regulate student housing developments. It's based on a market study verifying the oversupply, uh, of purpose-built student housing. That definitely was done in Durham, and Greenville probably wishes they've done it because they've actually, uh, experienced a bit of market oversaturation where they've actually had a purpose-built student housing development go under and it's sitting vacant currently. So, but just generally, the, the s- the special use permit, uh, has been, uh, how they've, uh, established that additional level uh, of regulation in order to, um, make those developments work for the most part. Okay, so we've gotten the general framework, um, all the pros and the cons and whatnot. So with that, staff sat down and have come up with three, um, primary policy considerations. And what, you know, at the end, when we go through our question and answer, um, what we would look for from the planning commission is to, one, offer, um, a recommendation of acceptance of the study, and then, two, at your discretion, uh, recommendations for how you would like to see staff proceed in terms of implementing any of these policy recommendations. So the first of our recommendations consists of an overlay district, which would be, uh, tied directly into the zoning ordinance, um, and would be based on a specific geography, a specific area, um, uh, generally within close proximity to, um, the K, the two KSU campuses. That proximity as well as the availability of university-operated transportation, the bus services, the, the, was it Owl, was it? Big, big Owl Bus, Bob, yes. Proximity to, uh, those routes, uh, as well as adequate pedestrian and non-motorized infrastructure, sidewalks, trails, et cetera. Those are some of the, uh, advantages associated with having it, uh, in an overlay. The provisions can be varied a bit. They, they, they can be tailored fit to specific, uh, pieces of the overlay zone. Underlying zoning would still be in effect with the additional layer of the overlays regulations on top of it. Or we could also incorporate the future land use designation into how the overlay, uh, uh, would, would go forward. So, um, you know, your under, again, your underlying zoning would always be in effect, but we could also add in, uh, different provisions based on the future land use category. Sort of like what we do with our special area policy or small area policy guidelines. So in co- in co- in combination, that ensures that, um, student housing development is consistent with the existing character of the surrounding area. Okay, some disadvantages to using the overlay is, um, the main one that stands out the most is that it is, uh, bound by specific geography. So anything that would want to possibly come in outside of the overlay district would not be subject to the overlays' regulations unless we were to, A, expand the overlay or B, create a new, uh, you know, overlay with a focus on student housing. So, um, you know, having to regulate multiple overlays, um, can be a bit challenging. So that, that, that would be one, uh, major disadvantage. And then, of course, it's an additional layer of regulation that's codified and is directly part of the zoning ordinance. So, um, that's additional, uh, uh, time and consideration for staff as they prepare uh, this analysis for, um, applications that will come in under the overlay district. Okay, so that's recommendation one. Recommendation two, I mentioned it just a while ago when talking about the North Carolina cities that we polled, special land use permit. Some big advantages to using the special land use permit is that it could be applied universally. It wouldn't be bound by specific geography. It could be used anywhere in unincorporated Cobb County. Some specific requirements it could address are a lot of the, um, quality of life issues that I've talked about before when it comes to parking, uh, personal security, lighting, on-premises security, uh, and access to, uh, uh, adequate transportation. Health and general welfare considerations applies to all special land use permits. Okay, so again, disadvantages, it's another layer of regulation, once again. It's another step in the process to rezone, uh, in order to accommodate this particular use. And the fact that, uh, it's encouragement or discouragement, um, is determined by the allowed uses in each zone. So, um, for instance, if you, if you want to use, um, say, the PVC zoning for, you know, mixed-use fifty acres or larger, um, you know, based on that, um, what they might be able to do there with a special land use permit, um, might not, I'm trying to think of how to put this, it... Yeah, based on the zoning, you know, the way you apply a special land use permit may encourage or discourage something that m- m- may be desirable or less desirable, for lack of a better word. That's the best way I can think of explaining it, and that's something that we can address further during the question and answer session, if you all would like. All right, next slide. Okay, and then the third and, and final piece of that is, um, amending the comprehensive plan, which is something that we do on an annual basis as is. We could consider the creation of small area policy guidelines that are specific to a single area or multiple areas. We, if the overlay district were considered as a recommendation, it could be used in conjunction with that, kind of like I mentioned a little bit earlier. And, uh, it can include language, uh, to encourage featured uses, such as, um, a minimum amount of, uh, in a mixed use, for instance. It could require a minimum amount of, of retail square footage on the ground floor of the building. That's just one way to do it. You could also limit it to, um, specific future land use, uh, uh, commercial future land use categories. So if you wanted to have it in a rack and a CAC, that's fine, but if you wanted to exclude it from a NAC, you could do that or any combination of, of the three, um, where you would include or exclude. Those are all options as well. And it doesn't add regulatory letters, layers as a standalone policy since the comprehensive plan is not a regulatory document, it's simply a policy recommendation, uh, document or policy guide document. So not having a regulation or the additional regulation could be seen as an advantage as well. On the flip side of that, having that flexibility could be seen as a disadvantage. You know, if you want to be hard and fast about what, what you want done, um, you know, using the comprehensive plan as a standalone, since it's discretionary and non-binding, might not be, you know, the way that you want to go if you want to be more firm in terms of how you want to see student housing, off-campus student housing developed. Okay, so with that, you know, it's a lot of information, a lot of things to consider, and I'll be glad to take your questions.
Okay, yeah, back to the sport, and you want to start it off?
Okay. I missed, again, I missed the discussion last Monday. We did yesterday at the work session, so I'm at a disadvantage there, but I'm trying to understand what's motivating this? Is Kennesaw State University come to the county and asked for something? Are the cities of Kennesaw and Acworth maybe doing things? I mean, we're trying to be thoughtful about how to be proactive with what we think is a problem, sounds like, but I'm trying to understand why.
The Board of Commissioners issued a moratorium on the Community Development Agency accepting any applications for private student housing and asked staff to conduct this research.
So that makes sense, okay, good.
I'll also say it's something I think we asked for.
I was thinking.
Along the way too, based on some of the cases.
So then, then my question is, sort of the flip side of that, you know, the corollars of that, KSU is on board, I assume? You're working with KSU on this, or are they part of this process, or are they not?
They are part of this process. We've met with staff from the Facilities Department at KSU, which is responsible for all buildings on campus, including residential halls. We've met with members of the KSU Foundation, which is the private nonprofit entity that has been tapped to develop private sector partnerships in order to consider future on-campus housing construction. So, the KSU Foundation has pretty much been put in charge of that, and we've met with them as well. We have not met with anyone from public safety at KSU, but we've had extensive conversations with the City of Kennesaw Police as well as our home police department here at Cobb County. There's actually a meeting coming up at the end of this week where there will be, it's been called by Commissioner Burrow, and there's to be representation from all impacted entities at this meeting. The Bells Ferry Civic Association has also been very active in this discussion as well. This is a topic that has interested them greatly because of the impacts that, you know, this whole phenomenon has had on many of its members.
Okay, so, we're being proactive because you've been directed to be proactive by us and the VOC. You're coordinating with all those different organizations and working with them, and it sounds like they're being receptive and working with you.
Yes.
When you look at similar areas, you know, the other locations around in Georgia and then out of state, the seven that you looked at, seven or eight, it seemed like the creation of, you know, you hit three of the four things that seem to be, you know, approaches that they were using. The creation of an overlay district, land use or special permits, use permits, and maybe implied by that, you know, comprehensive plan amendments. But what you left out was a specific set of design standards. Instead, you said it needs to be tailored, and I agree with this, tailored to the characteristic of the local area community that it would become part of.
One thing I'll say to that is that overlay district does include specific design standards. What we have currently in the county with our design guideline corridors, you know.
Okay, so this would be something like that?
Yeah, it'd be something like that. The difference is that our design guideline corridors are not codified into our zoning ordinance. If they were, they'd be zoning overlays. So, that's the similarity, it's just that the overlay codifies the design standards.
Yeah, so it just, it seems to me that, I'll just put a stake in the ground, that the, sort of the most, it sounds like we need to do something, and the most important thing that you've identified that is conceivable to think about doing is the special land use permits. That would be kind of a given that you would do that. The rest of it starts to sound to me like it is, you know, government overlay, extra bureaucracy, layers of things that I'm not sure I fully understand the benefit of.
I think we agree. Jason, one question, we don't have to have a recommendation on this today, do we?
You don't have to, no. You know, we've actually, in addition to the meeting that I just mentioned, that Commissioner Burrow scheduled for this Friday, we've been directed to go out to the community. This also resulted from last week's board work session. We've been directed to go out and hold an open house in the area and invite folks in the public and the different impacted constituencies out to come see what we've done and offer some input before, you know, anything is fully established, yeah.
So, this would be more like just giving some information kind of thing?
Yes.
Some of our thoughts and everything?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just to kind of respond a little bit to what you're saying, I think, you know, the question of whether this just becomes another government regulation on top of this has to do with whether the, what we're trying to require is focused on making these projects better or just restrict them. And I think if you're, you know, taking the perspective of possibly the Bells Ferry Community Association, their goal may be very different from the university's goal and somewhere in between, maybe our goals. I don't, I don't really know, but I do think that without an overlay district, your ability to do things like the easy access from these projects to the campus, ways of controlling the security along those route, ways of having call boxes and streetlights and, you know, less places for bad things to happen while you're doing it, become really restricted because you don't have a cohesive approach to, you know, managing that aspect. You're just looking at the building itself and not the way in which this building impacts lives.
That is true.
So, that's why I think the way you've presented it is great. I like the overlay district. I think a special land use permit is the way to make sure that the building incorporates all the things that these kind of facilities should incorporate, whatever those end up being, I'm not the expert on that, but you've got to be able to put your hand on all these different.
I totally agree. I think one of the issues is the special, the one thing that we have to have is the special use permit. That's the one guiding force that would give us the control where we do the overlay or wherever. But also, I think we've got to recognize that someplace we've got to do where we know where it's going into the residential areas, that's a major concern, especially with the Bells Ferry quarter back behind the Fry Road up through there. We've got to identify where we're going to put this housing, so.
Okay, I looked at a bunch of things. One was during the work session, I had asked, do we know how many of the students at KSU live at home with their parents versus live on or near campus? And it was come up that KSU wasn't able to provide that. So I thought, well, let me do a little bit of research, and what I found was statistics vary all over the place because one university may be more of a commuter and another may be more of a destination kind of university, and KSU's been switching between the two. So, it's hard to say. Forbes said, on like a national average, 54% of people tend to live at home, which seems very high for a bigger university, where, you know, on private schools, about two-thirds of them live on campus. And then, another six of those live near campus, and only one-six or, you know, 12%, 16% live at home. So, it just varies widely. So, I thought, okay, Kennesaw State, maybe a third of them live at home, as just a throw out number, and probably that leaves about 24,000 students who would live not at home. You could say maybe 4,000 of them don't live in the median area campus, they may live in Atlanta with other roommates or, you know, have other reasons not for living directly on campus. So that left about 20,000 students who want to live either on campus or close to campus. And who knows exactly what close means, but there's currently about 9,100 beds between the dormitories and the actual ones that were built. There's one more complex was converted, but we don't know how many beds that is. But, you know, there's, in the study there, there's potential for another 7,400 beds that may actually be past the saturation point because some people aren't going to want to choose that type of living. But, you know, it was interesting, I found some stuff from the National Center for Educational Statistics data. You know, that enrollment in universities rose about 21% from 2005 to 2010, but then took a 6% drop when the economy fell. But they're projecting it to go up by 2026, about 17% for those under 25 and 8% for those over 25. So, we're still looking, and KSU's very unique because they went up the whole time, I believe. I don't think they really saw a dip down there.
There was a bit of a dip as the economy, actually, as it was beginning to recover is when you start to see a bit of a dip, but from, you know, the early mid 2000s up through the beginning of recession, it was on a pretty steep upward trajectory.
And also, look at, you know, there's going to be a whole lot of different kind of universities in the future. University of Phoenix is the largest university in the country.
No, I found that amazing.
They're about four and a half times larger than KSU. You know, even, I went to Ohio State, they're about three times larger than Ohio State. You know, so, so things are changing. No, their football team's not as good. Also, you have, you know, distance learning is becoming more and more popular as a way to go to college. So, it's hard saying where things are going, and I think the big X factor is student loans. You know, when I went to college, it was extremely tough to get a student loan. You know, your family had to be below middle class for it to really occur, and that was wrong. It made it very difficult for people, but then I think the pendulum kind of swung the other way and it became way too easy. And now I think there's people in Washington saying, have we made it too easy? Are we setting people up for failure where they're going to have decades of student loans they're going to be paying to pay back their college education? And one thing all that loose money did is they caused tuitions to rise much faster than the cost of living. And also, I saw a lot of people getting the nicer apartments because they could get student loans and all of that. So that could impact this because these purpose-built housings are very monetized. I mean, I would have loved to have lived in something like this, you know, but I couldn't afford it. But, so those are some of the impacts. I saw that the CCIM, which is, you know, the foremost organization of commercial real estate, their institute did a study on this kind of housing, and they actually found that the rents tend to be fairly comparable to comparable traditional. If you do it by, you know, per bedroom, you add up what they're getting for their two or three bedrooms in a unit and that, and compare it to what it would cost you to rent a comparable, slightly higher. The, what I found interesting is the capitalization rate, which is basically their rate of return for the investors, was higher on this purpose-built student housing, a little higher than traditional. And I think it's, probably has to do with, if somebody defaults, it's not as big of a default because they're individual leases. Also, I kind of view them as being in, not that there's ever a forever location, but they're kind of, if they put themselves close to the campus, they're kind of a forever location. That's going to tend to be viable a lot longer than just the traditional apartment complex put anywhere. You know, the other thing is, they found they tend to be more eco-friendly because typically the utilities are included in your rent. So, the people building the buildings are, you know, paying the utilities, so they want it to be energy efficient. So, they go the extra step to be eco-friendly. They also found that the properties, the closer they are into the university, those ones hold up, the ones that get a little farther away are the ones that have struggled. So, so that tells us something there, but I found that interesting to go through and read, they had a pretty good study on it. You know, and there's, I think there's obviously, and Jason went through a lot of the advantages of, you know, you're only responsible for your room rent, not worrying about your roommates paying, and the rooms come furnished, and most of them have security involved, and I think that's really important. One of the things I realized in looking at this is a typical purpose-built three to four, five bedrooms in a unit, where a typical apartment complex is typically two or less. So what we're really doing with these is, this is a more intense use. Now, we always look at units per acre, but this really doubles intensity of use. So, for that factor, I think it warrants a special land use permit, not because it's for students or anything else, but because intensity's so much higher. So, my recommendation was going to be a slump based on any complex that goes over an average of two bedrooms per unit. So if they're coming in at three or four bedrooms per unit, no matter whether they're student-built or not, we should be taking a look at it on a special land use permit. You know, I also think our parking calculations don't hold up. I know there's been a change in the development standards, but the zoning code, it doesn't hold up because of the higher, you know.
Because you're going with the, versus, going with beds versus going with rooms.
With units, yeah, so, so I think certainly we need to look at the one, or maybe even 1.1 to allow a little room for guest parking too in these because they have students over in that. Obviously, building design's important, and that could be handled in a special land use permit, you know. I like the idea of putting the parking garage in the center and wrapping it and those kind of things, but that may not be perfect in every area. But you want it to be designed for long-term viability because these are probably going to last longer than the average apartment complex. You know, the locations, whether they're on a public bus route or the university bus route, or whether the facility's going to stipulate that they're going to offer transportation to the school all the time, you know, with their own shuttle bus. You know, I think security, onsite security, and I suspect the reason why we don't see that many incidents comparatively at these purpose-built is they have good onsite security, and I think they know that, but we'd hate to get somebody who came in and cut that and all of a sudden it's impacting our police and that with the higher intensity of use. So, those were kind of, if we had to do one, also, mixed use to encourage restaurants and bars and retail. But, I mean, you don't want students going out and drinking and driving home, so if the bar's right there in the complex, it's a perfect way to reduce that issue as well, you know, and that. Parents realize kids drink, especially college students, so they don't want them out drinking and driving. So those were some of the things, and, you know, we may want to consider, even if it's not a traditional mixed use, maybe in some of our zoning, allowing some mixed use that only serves the complex. You know, if they're, even if they're in an RM16 or something, to allow some commercial use under a special land use permit that would service that complex, you know, for groceries and all those kinds of things, you know, small. So, those were kind of my recommendations as I looked at it.
I think what you come away with is, no, you can't talk again, skip. No, 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 you can't do that. It's almost 12:30.
Just one thought.
Just one?
If I may?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It sounds like the special use permit is a key to this, but I also understand that the leadership, you know, the driving force for this is coming from us, you know, from the planning commission, the Board of Commissioners. And I don't get a sense that, you know, the Kennesaw State is taking this as a major initiative that they need to be front and center coordinating around. Instead, you're sort of... Instead, you're sort of, you're forced, I shouldn't say forced, sounds like you're dealing with various departments, excuse me, within KSU to get their inputs and thoughts and so forth, but there's not, like, this is a major strategic direction that KSU needs, recognizes it needs to go. So there's not a single point of contact, if you will. So, you know, having said that, I, it seems to me that if a SLUP-like process is put in place, there needs to be some significant thought-out sign-off by KSU in that process, because, you know, for example, it may be someplace where there's not a existing bus route, but KSU has plans to put a bus route there, or they're going to take it away or something, you know. So they need to have, they need to be part of the approval process, kind of like all staff comments come in for a rezoning, it's the same kind of thing. You know, we ask Cobb County School District for their inputs, they're not part of Cobb County Government, similar kind of approach to this.
That's one of the things that we, that's one of the things that we talked about in relationship to the SLUP recommendation, not so much in regards to transportation, but definitely in regards to security. One conversation that came up was involving the Chief of Police, Kennesaw State University, and I think the question was posed as to whether or not KSU Police had any input on the security plans for PBSH construction, and the response was no. He hadn't been approached, he hadn't been asked, but he'd be more than happy to offer that input and helping provide a more secure environment for PBSH development. So that's definitely one point of coordination that could happen by way of the SLUP, and then transportation, and then, and there's others. So that's a very valid point.
Thank you. I think, Galt.
I'm going to be very quick, I forgot, I meant to thank you.
He has one other point.
No, I was going to thank you at the very beginning, and I think I forgot for doing this study, because it's something that just occurs over and over, whether we're on the land use permits of the students living in the neighborhoods, or whether we're looking at the big developments coming forward and that. So I just wanted to say thanks for doing all the work and putting it together.
Yes. And I think what you might have, all the talking that we did up here, I think what you might have drawn is that we all agree that it's a special land use permit is the way, and an overlay. So somehow, we've got to come up with those two things, and we also have to have some kind of an analysis report from Kennesaw when we have projects coming in. So I think that sort of sums it up a little bit, the way we're going.
I'm not positive we need an overlay.
I'm not positive about the overlay either. I think it's a consideration, but I think the special use permit, land use permit is the way to go.
Well, thank you for the kudos, and special thanks to staff in the Planning Division. They put in a lot of time and effort on this.
They did. Y'all did a great job.
I just have to note on that point, the staff did a nice job. The first version of this I saw had a number of typos. This doesn't seem to have that. This is nicely written. Nice job.
Thank you for that. All right, and then we have one other thing, thank you, Jason. Do you want us to go ahead and give the motion?
If you all would like, you could make, you could move to recommend acceptance of the study once finalized.
Okay, we can do that.
And then you could also, if you choose to or choose not to, make recommendations as to which policy direction you'd like to go in, based on the three that were provided in the presentation or any others.
And we can do that, we can do that. So, Galt, you want to make the motion?
Sure. Yes, I would make a motion that we recommend approval of the study.
Yes.
So I think that would be one motion.
That'd be one motion, the acceptance of the study. We have a second call question, and that's proved 40-0, and then the second part.
The second one is that we make a recommendation that, would you like to use if it's more than two bedrooms per unit average? Okay, that for any multifamily that averages more than two bedrooms per unit, that it come in through a special land use permit to consider all the various factors of design, security, transportation, parking, and that those will be determined on a case-by-case basis. And there to be coordination with the neighboring school and police.
All right, so that's a motion, so. We have a second. All those in favor? So that carries 40-0. All right, we have a motion, motion to accept the minutes, and we have a second, my God. All those in favor? That carries 40-0. Does that everything? Have we have done everything today? We make a motion, we adjourn, who makes that motion? All those.